Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting agenda for Lewiston City Council, Monday, June 9th, 2014. We'll call this meeting to order. First order of business is pledge allegiance. Please join me in saying the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looks like we have a full house this evening. Our next item on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the city manager. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Now, we have a couple of public hearings tonight, so if people are here for the public hearing, primarily the URA, you're welcome to testify or come up and speak now, but if you could, hold your comments till we have the public hearing. That way, we can keep everything together. I think that would be appropriate. If you're here to discuss the, anything that's on the active agenda, i.e., the potential Verizon contact and Inland Cellular, this would be the time and place that we'd like to hear from you on this. So...or anything else, for that matter.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll take just about 90 seconds.
Name and address, Mark.
Yes, I'm Mark Havens, the Community Relations Director at Wedgewood Terrace, 2114 Vineyard Avenue, here in Lewiston. Wedgewood Terrace is the valley's only nonprofit assisted living community for senior citizens and persons with Alzheimer's disease. And the month of June, in addition to being the General Aviation Appreciation Month, is also Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. In the fight against Alzheimer's disease, the National Alzheimer's Association has branded June 21st each year, which is the longest day of the year, as the day for people and groups to engage in activities which honor the caregivers of those with Alzheimer's whose day never ends. People and teams are asked to do activities from sunrise to sunset on June 21st to build awareness and raise money for Alzheimer's research. At Wedgewood Terrace, on Saturday, June 21st, we'll be holding a pie social all day from sunrise to sunset in our multipurpose room. And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'd like to invite you and the audience here and the viewing audience at home to drop by Wedgewood Terrace that Saturday and enjoy a free piece of pie and a cup of coffee, and perhaps toss a few coins into a donation jar for Alzheimer's research. Hope to see you there on Saturday, June 21st.
Thank you.
Members of the council, my name is Tom Lee. I live at 3408 13th Street. On May 19th, three weeks ago tonight, there was a concert held at the Nespurs County Fair Building. I live in the neighborhood. I have to tell you, I've lived there since 1983. This was without a doubt the worst, the loudest, the most obscene concert we have ever had at the Nespurs County Fair Building. I called the police about 8:30 PM and talked to a really nice dispatcher who told me that they'd probably have to stop at 9 o'clock if they didn't have a noise variance. I called back at 9:30 and was told they did have a noise variance and that they could play till 10:30. I was also told that the officers were on scene and monitoring and that, mind you now, this is a Monday night, school night, school's still in session, a work night, I have to get up at 4 o'clock in the morning. I still had to get up at 4 o'clock in the morning, but I didn't get my normal six hours of rest before I had to go to work because of this concert. I did go down and speak to Deputy Chief Lanier, who's here tonight, and to be honest, full disclosure, I'm a huge supporter of the police department. I worked for the police department here for 26 years. I retired in 1999. I was the patrol commander for the police department. And in the 1980s, I was a staff liaison officer who helped craft the first comprehensive noise ordinance for the city of Lewiston with the help of some really concerned citizens and the city attorney's office. The noise ordinance was crafted to prevent just this kind of event. So, we kinda had a failure on a lot of parts. In talking to Lanier, the officers at the scene did warn him, and I heard that the police did warn him over the PA because they laughed about it and could have cared less about the police wanting them to stop. And the supervisor at the scene made a decision not to just stop it because this concert was fueled by about 400, apparently intoxicated individuals that the police did not feel that they could control, not even with the officers that they had in Nespurs County and the state police. So, this is the kind of concert we had on a Monday night. Well, looking back, why am I here? I mean, it's over. Oh, I'm still pretty, I still get pretty worked up about it, but I'm gonna kinda cut it short. I think the city council needs to revisit the noise ordinance. Revisit that noise ordinance. There's a couple of things that I think might, you might take a second look at. First, maybe noise ordinance permits should only be given to a local entity or landowner. Giving a noise variance to a promoter out of Seattle or Portland and he's gone the next day, you, the city police don't have a lot of leverage over him. Can't even find him to issue him a citation. Second, you might look into some maybe refundable, totally refundable deposits on a sliding scale. And secondly, I will be going to the fair board, you're saying, "Well, hey, we're the city council," but you guys do control the noise ordinance. So, I'd like you to take a second look at that, maybe, because, boy, this was, I gotta tell you, this is over the top. I went to work in the morning, I work at the Nespurs County Airport, I work for one of the airlines. A gal that lives around the corner from me works for the other airline, Brand X. And, of course, her husband called, she told her husband, "Please do not use the F-word to the police." I also had, there was also a fueler in the morning that fuels the aircraft, I'm about done. And he's a retired Nespurs County Sheriff's Deputy, he lives three blocks away, didn't get any sleep. So, anyway, just take a look at that noise ordinance, I'd appreciate it, gentlemen. Thank you.
Chip Demoto, 1020, or Kenneth Demoto, excuse me, 1027 29th Street, Lewiston, Idaho. And I'm here to speak about the wireless contract between Verizon and Inland Cellular. As stated previously at another meeting, that we feel that the process was not done responsibly and things were presented as apples to apples and done rather hastily. And there's many, there's many items that point to that, that this probably isn't the point in time to discuss. In reviewing the minutes for tonight's meeting in the packet, I realized that at the last meeting I spoke at, that it was, the city manager indicated he would get you the proposal and the information given by Inland Cellular. It was my understanding that that hasn't been done yet, and it was actually stated that we can't do that because if it ever went to RFP, then Inland would have an unfair fair, I don't know what the reasoning was for it, but I kinda find that really interesting. And how can you be informed if you don't have the information? Also, we are, on behalf of the 58 employees that live here and their families in the city of Lewiston, we'd like to get on record that we are very disappointed in the professionalism of the city staff and how the work session went down and so forth. There's a lot of other ways to handle that situation that isn't downgrading or tearing apart a local business to get somebody's way for what they want. As I reviewed the stuff online today in the packet that is put out there with Verizon, I realized there's many, many questions that are unanswered. One of the comments within the minutes was the fact that the cost doesn't really matter. We're looking for efficiency and that doesn't matter. Well, in a very conservative manner, because all of the stuff's not in here, and I'd love to walk through this stuff with you if we ever had the opportunity, it's close to $8,000, again in a very conservative manner. No line items for data allowance, 200 minutes, and with overages of 25 cents, I can tell you in the industry, that's the fastest way companies wanna make money, is overages. In the proposal you have not seen or haven't been allowed to see, you'll see that everything's unlimited there, if you get a chance to see that. So, there's many, there's several others that this, again, is not the place. We'll keep trying to get the right place to present this stuff. But in addition to, there was a lot of things in that meeting that said, "Oh, things will be corrected in October." If you were to look at this, you'll see many of these changes have already been made, including hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions, in the last, this year alone, in T1 upgrades to all of the cell sites, most of the cell sites in Lewiston, as well as IP links and contracts for new cell sites, new employees for technical services and new employees for customer services. So, a lot of things didn't get put on the table. And so, we're hoping that at this point in time, things can get, before you make a decision, but it sounds like it already has because there's been emails that I've given to some of you and read to some of you, that's right here, if anybody wants to see it, that basically indicates when the Verizon reps will be here, in the next week or so, and to put tape on your cell phones so that you can make that transfer quickly. So, there's a lot of things that don't make sense, there's a lot of things that smell in this whole thing, and we wanna make sure whether or not we receive the contract, if Verizon receives a contract, they're a good company, got nothing bad to say about them, that the process is done properly. And government process needs to be done right, and hopefully, we can get to that point. So, I think at this point in time, I guess I'll part with saying, we hope that we can put it on the table and you guys will take a closer look at all of the facts and it's apples to apples, and we can present some of these things to you. Thanks.
Corey Sandstrom, 916 Cedar Avenue. Been a lifetime member and a very good, huge community supporter of the valley and was a little set back when I heard about the Verizon-Inland Cellular thing. I've been a member, or, excuse me, I've been, I feel like a family member, actually, to Inland Cellular. I've been a customer of Inland Cellular since 1992. I serve on many committees and boards, not only locally but nationally, and the cellphone that I have seems to do everything that I need to do, from 1 gigabyte XL files for American Red Cross Blood services that I transport back and forth via email from Washington, DC and Salt Lake City, as well as Rocket on the River things that we do with local and national companies, such as Harley-Davidson, doing logos and things. So, I would, I would be very set back if we made a decision to take business away from a local business, that not only supports, like Chip said, 58 local people that support me at my job at Mick McClure Honda, but also to make sure those things are apples to apples. I've never been able to beat their prices, 'cause I have checked, but I've always also been able to contact someone and say, "Hey, this is what's going on," and I know those people face to face due to the fact that they're locally here. And I guess in closing, I'd like to say that, you know, to make sure that all the Ts are dotted and the, excuse me, the Is are dotted and the Ts are crossed, to make sure that we're making the best decision for us as a community, rather than just bottom line dollars. It does sound like to me, from my investigation, that they are the least expensive, as a local company updates things, sometimes it takes time. But, once again, myself personally, I've never had anything that was not doable on my Inland Cellular phone, and I have five of them on my contract, so it's not just myself, but my whole family. So, thank you.
Gentlemen, my name's Jerry Linehan. I live at 3743 Swallows Nest Court. For the last 15 years, I'm with McGregor Company, based out of Colfax, but managing all the different cellphone services we had, Verizon, Inland, AT&amp;T, Nextel, Sprint, US Cellular. About eight years ago, started taking a look at that, thinking, "This isn't very efficient." So, we started sitting down negotiating with two or three of the companies, Verizon, Inland Cell, and AT&amp;T, to see what the best we could do for the company up there. We made the decision to move about 90% of our phones to Inland Cell for two basic reasons. One, the cost was less for our company, and we have about 330 to 335 cell phones every month, so the cost is a huge deal. Inland Cell was significantly less than any other players. The second thing, though, that really was big for me, being managing it, is because of the service. I could call Inland Cell and I could get a technician or somebody to take, address an issue immediately. So, the service for our company, we cover a four-state area, a huge deal for us for the service. I moved to the valley a year ago, and I'm in semi-retirement with McGregor's at this point in time. McGregor Company is one that believes in supporting the local communities that we're in. We operate in a four-state area with about 350 employees. We believe in supporting all the local communities. When I drive around the Lewis-Clark Valley and the surrounding area, I see all the Inland Cells, all the donations and support, and the people that their time put in for all the different activities that are going on, particularly in the valley. I've seen Verizon sign two places, and that was on their building. Having that many employees here and the people that contribute, I would think that the Lewiston city should be looking very hard at using Inland Cell because it's a local business and a huge supporter of the community. Thank you.
Mike Lorenz, 458 Crestline Circle Drive. I think the easiest solution over this cellphone dilemma you people seem to have is really just to let the, give them city employees a $30 a month stipend, you go out and get whatever cellphone service you want, because I just feel like it's pretty ludicrous for the taxpayers to be, you know, paying to the tune of $50-some thousand a year of my tax money for cell phones, and it's like, you know, I don't think any of these city employees are underpaid and they can't afford their own cellphone. And I certainly don't have a problem paying for some of that, but I would guarantee, I would imagine the bulk of that cellphone usage is all private and has nothing to do with city business. So, instead of getting yourselves bogged down and who said what and this and these contract negotiations, just set this up, you get $30 a month, based on, you know, who really needs it, and you pay that out, and there's no more of this shenanigans of going through all this contract negotiations. You're gonna get 30 bucks and that's pretty much the end of it. So, I think that's something you really need to look at, because I think for once, you need to do something for the taxpayers, not the city employees. I mean, you know, a lot of people work pretty hard to, you know, afford to live in this town, and I just think there's better uses of my money and certainly better uses of your time than to sit here and go through this rigmarole of, you know, what phone company's the best. So, anyway, I'd certainly give that some thought as far as the cellphone business. Thank you.
Members of the council, my name's Paul Mark Walter, 2302 9th Ave, Lewiston. I'm here to offer my support for Inland Cellular. Operate a small business in town. We've probably had current running of around 25 lines for about 11 years with Inland Cellular. We offer emergency services on a 365-day, 24-hour period. We've never had any issues receiving an emergency call after hours regarding technical data. When I travel all across the country, I've never had any issues getting emails across or looking at emails, communicating with employees, vendors, the...So, if you do go to look at going through the contract negotiations as opposed to a stipend, I strongly recommend that you look further into Inland, not only their contract, but what they do for this community. Their social responsibility is unparalleled within their industry and our community, and I really think you need to take that to heart when you're looking at these contracts.
I'm Dick McMillan, 1220 3rd Street in Lewiston. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm here to sing the praises of Inland Cellular. As a small business owner, we've used Inland for lots of years, whether it's, we have people that view their cameras on Inland, that view their alarms on Inland. It's an integral part of our business, and there is nothing that I have, can't do with my Inland Cellular phone, and it's been a great asset for our business. Thank you very much.
Mayor, council members, my name is Rick Woods, 1362 North Viewpoint Drive in Lewiston. I've been with Inland Cellular from 1991 to date. Because the cellular business is so technology-driven, I've seen it change from hard-mounted, built-in phone in my vehicle to bag phones through a series of phones that I have today. Inland Cellular has grown with the technology and has been able to handle my needs locally and when I'm on the road. I realize there are ebbs and flows to this high-tech business, and this business is constantly changing, almost faster than the customers can absorb the changes. Locally, it's been hard to beat what Inland Cellular is offering. For example, I happen to live in the county. I travel along Old Lapway Road to get home. I can always tell who does not have Inland Cellular, in fact, about a half mile out of town on the south side of Lapway Road. The folks that do not have Inland Cellular have to pull over to continue their calls because their carrier does not work beyond that point. To the contrary, Inland Cellular clients have no break-in coverage in this area, and this is just one area, and I'm sure there are many others. This could be a safety issue if one of our city employees are needed for an emergency but happen to be in one of these areas that is not covered by the competition. Personal service is hard to compare, and I know you've heard that from other speakers tonight, but when you need it, it's impossible to replace it. 2005, I was in Dallas-Fort Worth area. Our phones were not working as planned, one called to Inland Cellular in Lewiston, and two new phones were on FedEx in our hands the next day. Any need that comes up for my business, phones are handled quickly and correct. Local support, I believe in local businesses. I also believe Inland Cellular has been, if not the top, near the top of all businesses that support local programs. Maybe we, as a community, have become numb to seeing the name and logo of Inland Cellular and do not really realize how much time and money Inland Cellular puts back into this community. I, for one, appreciate the community's support from Inland Cellular, but also the employment that Inland Cellular creates, which comes back in the form of clients from my operation, but also multiple other businesses, along with the taxes paid by those employees to the city. If there ever a time to keep it local, this is it. Thank you.
My name is Gary Piccone. I'm the, I live at 4091 Fairway, and I won't repeat a lot what the others have said. I also am here to, in support of your decision with the Verizon contract for Inland Cellular, and I come at it from a little different point of view. I work for a state agency, and we're often challenged to live within that state, state agency functions, and so sometimes there can be some limiting factors in how you spend your dollars and how you invest your dollars, the taxpayer dollars. I just know that from our point of view, we do everything we can to spend as much as we can locally, because I can guarantee you, on the other end, the end that when nonprofits ask for support, when events ask for support, it isn't the Applebee's of the world, it's the Happy Days. It isn't the Ford Motor Company, it's Joe Hall, and it isn't Verizon, it's Inland Cellular. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Any other comments this evening? Thank you, everybody. Okay, we'll move on to presentations and public hearings. First up, we have a proclamation for General Aviation Appreciation Month, June 2014. Whereas general aviation and community airports play a critical role in the lives of our citizens, as well as in the operation of our businesses and farms, and the state of Idaho has a significant interest in the continued vitality of general aviation, aerospace, aircraft manufacturing, educational institutions, aviation organizations, and community airports and airport operators. And in total, Idaho has 126 public-use airports, serving 5,900 pilots and 2,900 general aviation aircraft. And according to the 2010 Idaho Airport System Plan, the economic impact of general aviation in Idaho is over $426 million. The same report found that the total annual economic impact of aviation in Idaho is $2.1 billion. Idaho airports and visitors who arrive by air are responsible for 4% of the state's estimated gross domestic product, and Idaho's general aviation airports create 4,096 jobs annually, with an estimated payroll of $133 million. And according to the Idaho Transportation Department, approximately 23,000 residents of Idaho owe their jobs to the aviation industry, representing 2.9% of all jobs in the state. And the nation's aviation infrastructure represents an important public benefit and direct congressional oversight, is necessary to ensure stable funding of the system. And organizations like the Idaho Aviation Association, the Alliance for Aviation Across America, National Business Aviation Association, National Association of State Aviation Officials, Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, and National Air Transportation Association recognize and promote the interests and importance of aviation in Idaho and throughout the world. And general aviation plays a vital role in the state's response to emergencies and natural disasters, and many communities in Idaho depend heavily on general aviation and community airports for the continued flow of commerce, tourists, and visitors to our state. Therefore, on behalf of the Lewiston City Council, we do hereby proclaim general aviation a vital strategic resource to the state of Idaho and declare June 2014 to be General Aviation Appreciation Month. Mr. McCann.
Mr. McCann is the chair of our Joint Airport Authority on behalf of the city.
Thank you very much.
You have a few words?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on behalf of the Lewiston-Nespurs County Airport Authority, the airport itself, our tenants, employees, and friends of the airport, we'd like to thank you for this recognition. We have been in effect about three and a half years and done our best to run an efficient operation that serves our community well and is an important link to the outside world. We appreciate you taking the time to recognize us. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you. Okay, next up is the 2014-2015 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. We'll be accepting testimony on the plan at this time. Staff report?
Good evening, Mayor Kleberg and council. I'm so pleased that so many people turned out to hear my CDBG presentation today. It's pretty impressive. Usually, I get five people. Probably should've taken a Xanax before I came tonight. I was gonna try to move through as quickly as I can, and I'm still gonna do that, but then I realized that four of you are brand-new and might not know what CDBG even stands for, so I'm gonna give you a really brief background on the Community Development Block Grant Program. It's a very flexible program from the Department of Housing and Urban Development that provides communities with resources to address a wide range of needs, such as decent housing. My presentation looks different than my notes, so, anyway. A suitable living environment and economic opportunities. In order to receive funds from HUD, we have to do a comprehensive plan every three to five years that explains the needs and how we're going to address them in the community. An action plan needs to be submitted every year, and then we follow that up at the end of the year with a CAPER report that explains how we use the funds. All activities, in order to be eligible, they have to meet one of three national objectives, and those objectives are to benefit LMI persons, to prevent or eliminate slums or blight, or to address urgent needs that pose a serious and immediate threat to the community. Lewiston was accepted into the program in 2004 as an entitlement community because it's the largest city in the Lewiston metropolitan statistical area. Our awards back in 2004 was at 323,000, and that's declined to where it's just below 200,000, now expected for 2014. CDBG funds are used to benefit, like I explained earlier, low-to-moderate income persons or neighborhoods. or neighborhoods. To be considered low-to-moderate income, your level is at or below 80% of the median household income for the Lewiston MSA. So for example, the 2014 median in Lewiston MSA is 56,800. So an LMI household would be 45,450 or less. Some of the previous accomplishments that we've had are SNAP residential rehabilitation program. We've had some non-residential rehabilitation projects. We purchased a low-income transitional housing unit for the YWCA. We purchased land for the Habitat for Humanity projects. We funded a Red Rock water system extension project in North Lewiston. Put an elevator in the Bell Building, the Center for Arts and History, and the Lewiston Library. We funded ADA accessibility improvements in the new downtown library and the Salvation Army Kitchen remodel was also funded by CDBG. So far this program year, which runs from August 1st of 2013 until July 31st, we've spent 226,300. So our current award balance is 316,600 and we met our timeliness ratio. We have to spend down the award to where it's below 1.5 to 1 by June...it's generally June 1st or 2nd of the year. If we don't spend the funds down, then we risk losing a future funding. Our 2013 accomplishments, we've spent 25,000 so far this year with our SNAP multi-unit residential rehabilitation activity and that went to benefit the Burl Street Station apartments. We replaced their faulty fire alarm system. The Salvation Army Hygiene Center, which should be operational very soon, we spent 133,000 and leveraged about 70,000 in private nonprofit funding. Currently underway is the ADA access ramps and sidewalk improvement project. Now we spent 50,600 so far. We have about 300,000 left in CDBG funding and 440,000 in FTA funding to go. And this is kind of important because using the CDBG money as local match enabled us to get 440,000 in FTA funding that we wouldn't have been able to use otherwise. So far this year in administrative expenses, we've spent 2,700 mainly on publication and 15,000 in planning with a current activity balance of 3,300. The open activities as of right now, we have 10,000 left in downtown commercial rehabilitation, 1,000 left in admin and planning, just under 300,000 in the ADA access ramp sidewalk improvement project, 5,000 for neighborhood transit shelters, and 2,300 left in 2013 admin. What we're planning for, for the 2014-15 program year, $90,000 toward the construction of second-floor ADA restrooms and an electric door opener for the Fifth Street entrance of the downtown library. 54,000 plus any program income that we receive to go into the ADA access ramp and sidewalk improvement activity. And for this one, we're looking at doing Eighth Street between Seventh Avenue and Sixteenth Avenue as kind of a higher priority area. SNAP multi-unit residential rehab, we're programming 19,000 for that and 51% plus of the beneficiaries have to qualify as low-to-moderate income for us to use the money on that activity. For public services, we're programming 10,000. Again, 51% plus of the beneficiaries must qualify as LMI. And the Lewis-Clark Early Childhood Program has applied for some funding and they have a great new project proposed for the Adverse Childhood Experiences Intervention Prevention Program. It's a pilot education program for parents of children at high risk for abuse and neglect. And for administrative expenses, we're programming 25,000 and that is $5,000 for administrative expenses and 20,000 to go toward the funding of the ADA transition plan. So our public comment period is open for a few more days until June 11th. We've had it open since May 13th and if anyone has any comments, you can address it tonight or you can send them to me in writing, either by email or by mail. I've made an easier email address to remember instead of S. Boditzer, it's CDBG, c-d-b-g@cityoflewiston.org. And if anybody has any questions, I would sure take them.
Council, have any questions? Thanks, Stacy.
Sure.
Stay close.
And I could really use your approval if you agree with everything.
I believe we need to open a public hearing, don't we?
Sure.
Thank you. This time we'll go ahead and open this public hearing to testimony. Anybody wishing to speak in favor or against the proposed Community Development Block Grant Action Plan, please come forward. Not seeing any takers. Okay, I guess we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. You have any rebuttal?
It's a good program.
It is a good program. Just from my time with P&amp;Z and being on the council, there's been quite a bit of single-family residents that have...residential units that have benefited from this, whether it was a new HVAC system or windows, roofing projects, things like that to improve the efficiency of the house. Comes at a pretty low cost to the owners and then they're basically paid off when they sell the house and it goes back into the fund. So no, it's been a great program, good funding source for a lot of these projects, so. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And again, the public comment period is still open through June 11th. Okay, next up, we have a zone change. ZCO-2-14, the applicant is Lewiston Orthopedic Associates. There's a request to rezone its 0.6-acre lot in an R2A low-density residential zone to planned unit development as a westerly extension of the applicant's existing PUD-zoned property and facilities at 318 Warner Drive. Jackie.
Good evening, Mayor Kleberg and members of the council. Yes, I'm here to talk to you about Zone Change 02-14 submitted by the applicant Lewiston Orthopedics. And we do have Dr. Joynke in the audience if we have any questions to the applicant. So we met with planning and zoning on April 23rd, if I got that right. Sorry, my notes. On April 23rd regarding the zone change. The applicant is requesting a planned unit development amendment to change zoning of vacant property from R2A, which is low-density residential, to planned unit development to increase the parking area to support an increase of volume of staff and patient traffic at the Lewis-Clark Outpatient Surgery and Lewiston Orthopedics. The property is located in the West Orchards neighborhood, five of the comprehensive plan. That's this area just here. Staff reviewed the application and the area with the following findings. The surrounding land use is varied. To the north is undeveloped and zoned R2A low-density and an F2 agriculture, which is just here. East is the planned unit development that the subject property would join if approved, making the total approximate 2.89 acres in the planned unit development. This request meets three of the Planned Unit Development Regulation requirements, which has been highlighted in the staff report, which is in your pack. The area is less than five acres consolidated. The site is adjacent to an area which has been developed under the provisions of the planned unit development and the proposed land uses will be mutually harmonious, compatible with the adjacent land uses, plus an agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. This is a good central location for both Lewiston and Clarkston residents to gain access with ease. The location is within walking distance of the Lewiston Transit Route for those who do not have transportation. Approval of the zone change would support the medical campus growth and relieve traffic congestion along Warner Drive. And I'll just show you some of the surrounding photographs that I took on my visit. So that just shows the notice with regards to the proposed plan of the zone change. This is the existing parking area. This just shows you some of the lighting and landscaping and basically how...let me just move that back. There we go. And how the parking is being used at the moment. This shows you some of the traffic parking on Warner Drive and as you can see, both sides of the road there are being used. Obviously not just Lewiston Orthopedics, but generally this end of the street, it certainly was present. This area here is the actual entrance to Lewiston Orthopedics, just in front of this car here. So there's a lot of congestion around the entrance. This photograph probably shows it a little clearer. So this shot was taken and this is sort of...this area here would be where part of the new parking would be going and where we're talking about the zone change. And this little road here that you can see is that's Brighton Canyon Road. So this shot was taken from the parking lot to the undeveloped property of undeveloped land facing this way. So under the current zoning, the property owner cannot use the land for commercial use and therefore requests the zone change from R2A to planned unit development so that they can move forward with obtaining a parking lot permit. This will support the additional services that they provide to patients in the area and also for staff parking. And staff did recommend to planning and zoning of approval and planning and zoning passed unanimously on the 23rd of April. At the time of the hearing, there was no opposition and there was no public comments received. In your pack, the client, the applicant, has requested to suspend the...I'll read the paragraph. So they respectfully request the city council to pass ordinance on the first reading under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings and then read in title only. Passing the ordinance on the first reading under suspension of the rules will allow them to proceed fairly quickly with the expansion and benefit the general public visiting their campus as well as other businesses in the area. Are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Not at this time. Thanks, Jackie. Okay, I guess we'll go ahead and open this public hearing. Is the applicant here? Like to say a few words? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Adam Jelenik, 3325 Sunrise Terrace Lane, Lewiston, Idaho. And Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for allowing us to speak here. As she's emphasized, really this is gonna be a congestion problem that we've seen for quite some time. We've had many patients that have complained about not having enough parking. We're going to be implementing some new services in our surgery center, including the addition of ear, nose, and throat and we've also added GI. And so we anticipate that the congestion will actually be worse. So we're going ahead and hopefully proceeding with adding about 50 additional new parking spots to try to alleviate that as well as the congestion that you've seen on Warner Drive that we see on a daily basis. And so we're trying to get this done as soon as possible. The new services, as far as ENT, will be starting in July and so we'd like to get going on this as soon as we can and that's why we had a request that we could potentially get this going sooner and waive the request of the three hearings.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Are you with the applicant or...? Oh, okay. Well, I guess we'll open it up for public testimony.
My name is Mike Ward, 233 Preston Avenue, Lewiston, Idaho. I am with Sport Physical Therapy as a representative from Sport Physical Therapy. We are in the adjacent parking lot with Lewiston Orthopedics and this congestion problem has carried on for quite a while. We too are having difficulty with access for our patients, for our clinic as well, and for also parking for our employees. I do think this would be beneficial not only to Lewis North Peak, but also the surrounding medical complex. I think this would be advantageous, especially if they are gonna continue to proceed in this manner to have other services there. It would really help our clinic and would also...we were in full support of this if you'll consider it.
Thank you.
My name is Dick White. Business address is 1015 F Street. I own Ray J. Whitensons and we manage the Brighton Canyon Professional Center, which is located just to the east of the LOA property. And we have seven buildings and 11 owners and one of which is Mr. Ward. And we are...the association is in support of this zone change and he's correct with the parking issues. We have them as well in that complex and so if that relieves any of that congestion there, that would be helpful. So we'd appreciate a positive vote. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, well, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Final comments, Jackie, or...?
I just think that we would like, obviously, council approval to suspend the three readings if that's a possibility.
Okay, council, I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve the zone change. Does ZC...?
I'll make a motion to approve the zone change, but with the stipulation that instead of suspending all the readings, that we consolidate the first and second reading so that we can have two readings, a first and second in one and then the third reading as the last one. That'd be two readings.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
When would be the next meeting?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you can get the ordinance on June 23rd.
So if you're gonna do two readings, you would have June 23rd and then the first meeting in July, which I think is the 14th or something.
Which puts it off another 30 days. Okay. Which puts it off another 30 days, okay. Was that your intent?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to...
Guys don't want to comment?
Certainly.
All right. If they already have to wait till the 23rd, and then they're gonna have to wait another 30 days, trying to decide here what would be the best route, I mean, is that, if I can't ask them, but...
I mean, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, normally you would not do three readings all at once, but there appears to be no opposition to this particular zone change, so...
Well, and that's, I guess that's kind of my comment, too. I think I've been party to three readings in one evening in the past. This one, to me, I mean, it's kind of down the road from where I live, and there's nothing going on there, it's a wheat field. Been in the McGregor family for years, and I have had the opportunity to go to LOA and to some of the offices in that complex and just bed, so I don't know if there's any harm necessarily in letting them go forward with their project, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I've been in the same predicament. I've had to use their facilities there, and, but I still don't agree with consolidating three readings into one, just because I don't want to shortchange the public.
We had a public hearing at planning and zoning? It was noticed?
I'm sorry?
We've had a public hearing through the planning and zoning? Correct?
Right.
Okay.
And you've had a public hearing?
And then we're having the public hearing, so... I don't know, I guess, well, let's, let's vote on the motion. Those in favor of separating this out into two different readings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, motion fails. I guess we're back to, I'd entertain a motion to consolidate the three readings to approve the zone change O2-14.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I understand Council Randall's concerns, I don't want it to look like we're ramrod us now, but I see Jackie's photos were taken April 16th or something, I'm sure they were at the public hearing for planning and zoning. The sign has been up for quite some time, so, yeah, I guess that being said, with no opposition and nothing but support, I, I guess I would support the, the zone change, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, and I'll just add, normally for government ordinances and whatnot, I, I prefer doing three readings, but I think in this case, it's already been heard at planning and zoning, we've had a hearing now, I'm comfortable with suspending them.
Thank you. Those are comments? Okay, those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries six to one. Okay, next up. Public hearing for Urban Renewal Plan Two, accepting testimony on the Urban Renewal Plan Two, which sets forth the strategy of capital investment in public infrastructure as a means to improve economic conditions and the community tax base.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Laura Von Tersch, Community Development Director, and also the Administrator of the Urban Renewal Agency. As you said in your introduction of the agenda item, the Urban Renewal Agency is focused on using infrastructure as a tool and a platform to support private investment and grow the local economy. You've seen these objectives before, they've been with us for some time, and they're in the plan, and they're in the annual report, but they, they help us focus on what the agency is and what they want to do. Improve infrastructure leverage, encourage, support additional land development, improve the local tax base, fund projects with community support, fund projects that solve community problems. One of the measurements of how you grow an economy is certainly the change in assessed values. And what this slide shows you is, from the inception of the agency in 2006, we started with assessed value of $11 million, and as of the close of 2013, we're now at just under $91 million. And these are real tangible values and results for our community. For every dollar invested by the Urban Renewal Agency to date, we've had an overall return of investment of $12.10 of taxable value. At previous sessions before the council, I step through a scenario with or without the Urban Renewal Agency in terms of dollars available for infrastructure. And this one happened to have been roads, but it could be any infrastructure project. And the Urban Renewal Agency has resources, such as the personal property backfill from the state, that if the Urban Renewal Agency went away, we would immediately lose that value, and as of FY13, that value was over $3 million. And so what this slide demonstrates is that in Area 1 and Area 2, which were the two districts that have been discussed over the last year for potential closure, we're now bringing in about $1 million. And if the Urban Renewal Agency went away, we would be losing .41 on the dollar in terms of monies available for the City of Lewiston to budget for infrastructure projects. Cities today are motivated by their need to drive economic growth, increase investment and job creation, to allow for better standards of living, and the financial capabilities to manage the city infrastructure that serves the wider urban environment. And this objective cannot be met simply with a cut taxes, cut services mentality, where putting $5 in my pocket or your pocket is more important than collectively investing in it for a 12 to 14-fold economic return. And it also can't be solved by throwing money at the problem. We have to work smart and be strategic in our thinking. And one, one of the pieces that CEDA put together most recently was a presentation entitled, I think it was Moving Forward Idaho. And this is just an excerpt from that presentation, but it identifies infrastructure as a weakness in our future economy and the future growth of our economy. And it's not only what we have, but what we don't have, and whether we're capable of maintaining it or not. So I want to step through a couple of the, the infrastructure projects that are in this draft plan. And this first one is the North Port Transportation Study that is very close to closure, if it has not already been adopted by the MPO. And it was a multi, multi-partner project of the port, the Lewiston Grain Terminal, and the MPO jointly funded this project to really address some needs in North Lewiston. The, the road system, not just the quality of the pavement, but the circulation pattern is very confusing, which makes it dangerous. It does not accommodate both pedestrian needs or passenger vehicles and trucks safely, and there's a need for expanded rail. If we could have expanded rail in that area, it would be a very big incentive for new businesses to come in. So the, the yellow on this map just shows some realignments of roads, some closures of roads to reduce the awkward intersections and the rail expansion. This slide here is properties on the north side of Lewiston, known as Harry Wall and Harry Wall West and Harry Wall East. An engineering firm in town has been hired to identify the cost of extending water, sewer, where need be roadways, to bring this land into full productive and industrial use. This is a graphic of the Nesburst Drive extension. It would go from the present terminus of Juniper Drive, which is at the movie theater, and would wind around to Gun Club Road. This particular project is the downtown infrastructure repair rehabilitation project, and it's what we're calling the local option, if you will, piggybacked on the FEMA project. So what we have is a grant for FEMA 2 in the amount of about $2 million. And for us to realize this grant funding to reduce and/or eliminate flooding in downtown Lewiston caused by the levy system, we have to have a match of about 25%, so $500,000. But the thought was, we're gonna be tearing up these roads, we're gonna be putting in big pipes, we've gotta put the road back. Why not put it back in a way that makes more sense to us in terms of, instead of just having a strip of new pavement over the pipe, why don't we have a whole new roadbed? Why don't we take care of the entrance to the municipal parking lot on F Street at the same time and pick up about 30 more stalls? Why don't we widen the sidewalk where it's now so narrow on D Street? So those are some of the projects that were identified in the preliminary engineering designs for this downtown project. And the Urban Renewal Agency is committed to contribute $700,000 over the next two years towards that project. When we look at projects, when the Urban Renewal Agency looks at projects, when the council looks at projects, we want to make sure that we're looking at the best ones, we are funding them at the best level. And so the board has put together a project evaluation tool, and this is just going to them for the first time tomorrow. But it, it is the work of two of our board members, because they wanted to have a way to vet these projects in an objective manner. And so they were looking, if you go across the top of the slide, they're looking at things such as increased property tax base, creates jobs, has partner, so that'd be a partner to share the costs with, brings outside money into the LC Valley, and creates or contributes or accelerates a big project that otherwise would not be done. And so they, they'll be working on this over the, the next few meetings to get it to be exactly what they want. And so right now, it's a listing of all the projects that we show in the Urban Renewal Plan, and they would be put through this process. Now, the next couple slides just indicate how we would rank any one feature. You know, what level would you need to achieve in terms of job growth to be a very positive instead of a neutral or a negative? And this remains to be seen how it flushes out, but just to give you some idea of what that might look like. So on the citizen survey, when we call people, we say, "How would you like your tax dollars spent, and do you think we're doing a good job?" When the citizens say something's very important to them, that, of course, would be a good thing to fund if we could, and it also met the objectives. But if it was negative, if our citizens didn't feel that that was a good project, well, we should, you know, take a look at that. So on the creates job category, for example, are these living wage jobs, are they just jobs, do they displace jobs or displace living wage jobs? So this is a way for us to start drilling down on these projects about what would be the best one to fund. So I'm just gonna kind of skip through that. This next slide has to do with construction values in our community, and it's not intended to say the Urban Renewal Agency did that. It's intended to show that through the efforts of your city staff, the Urban Renewal Agency, beautiful downtown Lewiston, and other people who are pulling together, that we have created a positive investment climate. This is, this is our private sector investing money in the built environment, bricks and mortar. And last year, we had a record year at just under $61 million. You can see our average is, you know, just below or just above $30 million, depending on what year you start on. And we may, we may finish this year at, at that level, or a little bit less, which is what the little red dots are. But it's a very strong sign of investment climate and that we have a good one, and, and I think everybody can be thankful for that. I wanted to leave you with a couple images. Again, I know that you've seen these in other sessions, and we have them in the plan, but one good investment can go a long way in terms of priming the prompt, the pump for another project to happen, in terms of encouraging somebody to take that leap, that maybe they were sitting on the fence, or they're looking at another community to make their investment. And for those of you who look at things in a different way, maybe you're a farming family, we, we can, we can eat our seed crop, and our bellies will be full, and we'll all be very thankful for that. Or we can put in a little bit more hard work, we can farm it, we can produce more, we can sell them, we can reinvest, we can give some away. And that's the position I think our community would like to be in, that they have growing revenues that they could then make some other choices with. So that concludes my PowerPoint presentation, and I would anticipate that there's gonna be some questions that I could take care of now, or I could take care of later, whatever the pleasure is.
Council, have questions for Laura? Councilor Daniel?
All right, in Appendix G, it's referencing a street maintenance and capital projects. It says that Mr. Davies provided the council with possible funding options and recommended $500,000 from the URA for four years. Is that spelled out in the ordinance that URA will give the city $400,000?
If you were talking about the rebate, that was approved in the URA's budget. I believe that has been expressed by both the manager and Mr. Davies, that the rebated funds from this year would go into roads.
But is it spelled out in the ordinance for all four years as recommended?
I'm not sure what four years you might be referring to.
On May 5th, it's on the appendix you provided, G9, very top, it says, "Mr. Davies provided the council with possible funding options and recommended $500,000 from the URA for four years. A 2% of this franchise fee increase, dedicate $50,000 in property tax revenue to cover inflation costs, and dedicating $100,000 in forgone taxes for capital projects. He asked the council what level of PCI they wanted to maintain the streets, and does the city wish to continue leveraging federal funds in the future."
Thank you. The purpose of Appendix G is to include some of the records that have been produced as we've gone through this hearing step. And that record in Appendix G, page nine, was to include the council regular meeting work session agenda item on Urban Renewal Agency. And it just so happens that I didn't redact that because it applied to the agenda item that had been considered prior to the Urban Renewal Plan. But we can clean that up in the, the final printing of the document, because we wouldn't want to lead anybody astray by that. Okay, so on Appendix G, you can see just at the top of the page, Item C, that's where our item started on the minutes.
Okay.
And it's titled Urban Renewal Agency Recommendation.
Okay. So the $500,000 isn't spelled out in, in the ordinance that we'd be voting on?
No.
Okay. And then...
Ottem?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, I'll continue.
Okay. On, I think it's, it's in this packet, it's on G4, Appendix G as well. It's revenues available for road, for roads/infrastructure with and without URA, Area 1 and 2. Down towards the bottom, it says dollars available to city with URA, and it shows $1 million. And then dollars available to city without URA, which would be that $1 million minus $592,000, and then a loss to the city of $414,000. Where would that $414,000 go? It's not disappearing.
Well, the personal property backfill from the state does disappear, and that is $3.2-something million. So that does just disappear. The balance of that money would be rebated or redistributed to the other taxing entities.
So the city would get the money, it just wouldn't be going through the URA?
No, the city doesn't get the money. The city, under these projections, would receive $592,000, and they're now receiving a million. So if you look at it from the city's point of view, you have a loss of revenue. If you looked at it from the point of view of another taxing entity, you would have more revenue. Because when, see, the, the, the URA, the increment, if you will, is created by the city tax levy, the county tax levy, a very small portion of the school district tax levy, and the port. So the URA receives a portion of the revenues created by the increased value in the district that otherwise would have gone to the other entities.
Ottem Johnson?
I have a copy of the minutes here from October 12th, 2005, and in it, it says Laura Von Tersch discussed... Von Tersch discussed potential disposal of assets should the Urban Renewal Agency choose to disband after all bonds are paid off. Laura Von Tersch emphasized all bond payments can be accelerated, excuse me, to pay off bonds early. Why would you emphasize paying off the bonds early?"
I think that's good stewardship of the funds. If you don't have to incur an interest cost, you don't. And by paying off the North Lewiston bond 14 years early, we did save a sizable amount of money.
Laura, what is that? I'm sorry. Did you have a follow-up?
My follow-up is, it says if all the bonds are paid off early, the URA can be disbanded. Did you believe back then that it could be disbanded if all the bonds were paid off?
Well, you can't disband it if you have a bond, because you would be harming whoever purchased your bond. So certainly, without bonds, you could disband, but that's a policy decision for the council to make.
So you didn't advocate accelerating, accelerating paying off the bonds in order to close the URA at that time?
No.
And I publicly, I publicly apologize for jumping in on you just then. I seem to do that a lot. I apologize. Laura, I know in our URA meeting, that number was given about what the savings was. What was the savings roughly, the dollar amount, by paying them off early? I remember hearing that. I just don't remember.
Well, it would be at least 5% of 750,000 over 14 years, with the balance progressively getting smaller. So what do you think that would be?
375.
375,000. Thank you, Mr. Mersch. I can only do math when I'm sitting down.
I need my Hewlett-Packard calculator.
Councilor Randall?
I was just curious, on the, you've got all these appendices for our Urban Renewal Plan 2, and I haven't seen anything in there that included in it for the Terrace area. Resolution 2008, which was a resolution approving the planned unit development agreement between the city, the Port of Lewiston, Joe and Frances McCann family, limited partnership, Joe McCann testamentary trust, and M&amp;S Limited Partnership. And one of the things that's in that, in Section 4, is that the developer shall solely be responsible for all traffic improvements required by the traffic study. Now, my understanding is, what we're trying to do with the URA is pay half that from the tax money that we get from the URA in that area. I don't, I think that goes against that whole idea of that resolution, that there was an agreement that the developer would pay the cost.
I don't think it's quite as straightforward, maybe, as you're characterizing it. And I had this discussion with-
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, maybe I can address that.
Okay.
I'm sure Laura hasn't looked at that resolution, and I've looked at it just recently. It's a development agreement between the city and the McCans for the development of their, their planned unit development, and that's the parameters of it. So what it requires, it's a relationship between the city and the McCans for what they develop inside the planned unit development. And whether or not that impacts what the URA wants to do in the area or not, we certainly take a look at it, but it's not some, an overbroad kind of resolution. It's simply something that, where the city council adopted a development plan for that planned unit development, so.
Well, I guess, my understanding is, at the time when they started the first phase of development up there, they had to put some money aside for potential traffic improvements, particularly up at the 10th and Thane and Warner intersection. It wasn't a big chunk of change, and I might be wrong, Don, you might remember, but to anticipate if there ever was another opening off of that property onto Gun Club, that there would already be some money in there to help defray that. I don't see anybody here from their cans, so. Anyways, did that answer your question?
I still think that the city should abide by the agreement that they made with the McCans and the Port District based on that resolution. I don't think, and that includes the URA, should have to live up to that agreement.
Councilman Randall, if, if you would, if we could maybe hold on that thought, and then at a next meeting, we can come back with a resolution, and we could look at the implications of that resolution.
I may have some additional comments and questions, but once we get past the hearing portion, I want to consider the act's agenda.
Fair enough. Okay, other questions for Laura? Okay, well, I guess, at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. There's anybody that wishes to speak in favor of the Urban Renewal Plan 2, or opposition?
A little taller than Ms. Von Tersch. Brianna Durham, 407 Main Street. It's been almost exactly a year since downtown celebrated both the official opening of Fifth Street and Lewiston City Library. If you were downtown that day for the celebration, you felt the energy and support that a great deal of our citizens have for those projects and overall revitalization efforts. It was truly an incredible day for our community. You have a lot of really impressive reinvestment statistics in your packet, so I won't reiterate those. But I did want to let you know that in the last year alone, I've had the pleasure of working with about a dozen small businesses that have looked downtown to open up shop. And that's just within a few block radius of the Fifth Street rebuild. Local businesses and property owners are responding to the investments of the city, the URA, and beautiful downtown Lewiston by investing their valuable resources into quality businesses and renovating historic buildings. There is still a great deal of work to be done downtown, but there has been a distinct momentum shift over the last few years, which the URA has been a very important partner in. Thank you for investing in areas of economic growth for our community.
Council members, Mr. Mayor Doug Havens, Nespers County Commissioner. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm encouraged by the questions that I've heard so far. That's a good sign, when people start asking questions. I'm encouraged by the people that are in attendance, whether they've stayed for this topic or for some other topic. I think it's important, when you're talking about millions of dollars of taxpayer money, it's encouraging to see people are concerned about that. So once again, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I know you had an afternoon meeting, I know how those long days go, and so in the interest of time, the county has prepared a handout for you to just review during your deliberations. And I intended to make my comments twofold. This is onefold. So hopefully, it'll save some time. I'm going to pass them out, I have a couple of extra copies for your staff, once it reaches the end of the table. There's probably an extra copy for the Tribune there. By the way, I read in Saturday's paper where I was going to be here, so I thought I'd better show up. Yeah. Thanks for letting me know. If you could save one extra copy for Joel. You know, urban renewal has been talked about quite a bit for years, and I'm actually up here speaking, I think it's a portion of opposition, I'm not exactly sure, but, but for years, the county's been very supportive of urban renewal. I could have very easily been up here years ago, in fact, when I was on the city council and mayor, supporting the projects that we were doing through urban renewal. But some short time ago, we seemed to have kind of jumped off the rails a little bit, expanded into areas maybe we shouldn't have been, coming up with more broad definitions of what the plan actually called for. And for that reason, the county felt like it was imperative for us to take a stand. You see, when a private citizen took a stand early on with urban renewal, the courts ruled that he had no standing. He could not bring his suit because he had no standing with urban renewal. Funny how we're using taxpayer dollars, but a taxpayer has no standing. Only those entities that make up urban renewal can take a stand. So on the behalf of the citizens, the county decided to take a stand. And we oppose this ordinance, or this, I should say, this adoption of what is being called Plan 2. We believe it to be a new plan, not an amended plan, and our reasons have been stated before, and some of that is included in the handout I gave you. You know, the similarities between a good plan and a bad plan, and I know you've dealt with bad plans. You inherit bad plans all the time when you're a new council member coming on. Plans have been in existence for some time, but they both start out the same way, a good plan and a bad plan. They start with good intentions. Of course, you have good intentions, goals to meet, whatever it may be. But beyond that is where you go into the bad part of plans. And I believe this to be a bad plan. I don't believe it's complete. I surely don't believe it's been discussed appropriately as far as in depth. And I don't, and for a matter of fact, many of your dollar amounts are just basically estimates, and it calls for more than that, calls for more than estimates. This is the people's money we're dealing with. So I did want to refer, since one or two of you did talk about this handout that was shown. I wonder, yeah, okay, good. And I'm going to keep this pretty brief, because over, you know, a period of time, the council, or the county has taken exception with some of the numbers that has been presented to both the council and urban renewal. And, and we tried to point those things out, and, and sometimes we've been successful in getting things corrected, and sometimes they just move forward with incorrect numbers. I actually believe that some of the numbers on here have not been portrayed correctly. I don't work with the numbers in this kind of detail, but the county has people that do. But my point is, what I want to point out is very, down at the bottom of the page, which I think one of the council members was touching on earlier, where, where this handout had, has shown that there's a loss to the city of 400,000. I'm here to tell you, there is no loss to the city. The city gets your money from these revenue allocation areas. You're not losing any money. That money there goes to the other taxing entities. That's not the city's money. Urban renewal is losing the money. That money would go to urban renewal. We seem to have this co-mingling of entities where urban renewal, the city, you're talked about in one term, and pretty soon, the lines have been so blurred, you can't tell them apart anymore. So that loss to the city is not to the city. That's to urban renewal. I just want to make that clear on your, on your handout. You know, a big part of my presentation, I'm just going to go into my thoughts now because you have the, you have the information in front of you and the county's position and, and our recommendation on this Plan 2 and the ordinance, coming up later on your agenda. A big part of, of these types of issues is trust. The trust that the taxpayers put in their elected officials to do the right thing. And for a period of time, I, I really questioned that, what our elected officials were doing to that, that trust bond we have with the taxpayers. Because if you read the history of urban renewal, and, and Councilman Blakey, I think you touched on it a little bit, or, and I think Councilman Johnson, the intention was specific projects, then closure, and everybody benefits from, from that increased, what hoped to be an increased tax base. But we didn't do that. We didn't do it. We told the people we were going to do it, but we didn't do it. So what does that do to the trust? You know, the county is here, as we're always here at these meetings, available for questions. I mean, that's what we do, not what I do. Numbers that size boggle my mind. But, but the people that work at those numbers are here. In fact, we, we've tried on occasion to meet with the city, and we had a meeting with the city once, I think it's been about a year ago now, and, and tried to express our concerns, and, and I know that it plays out in the presses as, you know, a pretty contentious relationship, city and the county have. In fact, I remember hearing a then-candidate council member, "Shame on the city, shame on the county for not being able to work this out." You remember who said that? Councilman Blakey?
Appears you're very good at quoting me tonight.
In six months, we've never met with the city. In fact, when Mr. Spickler, the county prosecutor, asked to have the city join us in a court action to find out, "How can we legally spend this rebate money?", you would have none of it. Absolutely not. Did not want to partner with the county to find out legally how we could do this. So we were left, if we do it, to go alone. We have extended a hand.
Doug, obviously, I've seemed to be the spear point of-
Oh, I'm not done yet.
-where you want. I'm the lightning rod right now, and I'll take your hits. I'm a big boy. I've hit, I've taken worse. But comment here is, in that meeting, if you're going to quote me, let's quote me correctly. Let's not quote half of it, not all of it. And you've quoted me now three times. Twice, you've only quoted part of it, not all of the situation. So let's make sure we're accurate in what we're going to say, okay? We're big boys, we can all go back and pull the minutes out, let's correctly say things. My correct term was, I said it was ridiculous. And that's, that's the word I used in that second meeting with Attorney Spickler, was a ridiculous. It's interesting, though, that in that meeting, no other entity has commented on it. He was, he invited both the school district and the port to be involved, along with the city. We've not heard comment from them.
So that came out of my time?
You can have it back.
You're not on the clock. Okay. It was just in the interest of time that I didn't go into the full minutes. I, I could have done that. In fact, I have all that stuff piled up on my desk, just trying to be brief here. And I don't know if the prosecutors heard from the school district or the port. I don't know that. Maybe you know that. They weren't at the meeting. So how would you know that? But anyway, my point was, we've just, we've tried to partnership to find this thing out, to find out that particular issue. Now, you know, it was said that, I think it's in one of the notes, that there's been over 20 meetings about urban renewal. 20 meetings of people could comment on the plan, or the projects, objectives, whatever it might be. You know how few people even come to those meetings? I know Councilman Blakey does, but some of you others have come to a few. And how even fewer people actually speak because it's a complicated issue. It's hard to follow it. I've been at it for years, and you learn new stuff all the time, that, that the base actually is shrinking. The base from 2005 actually has gone down. I don't think anybody knew that until the county assessor mentioned that at a meeting. I don't think city staff even knew that. In order for urban renewal to work, the base has to go down. That means taxpayers are paying more just to bring the base up to the level that it was in 2005. Now, I know I'm going over the head of the people here because it's a complicated issue, but something that is true, just never talked about. You know, I'm going to close with this part, because this has been the hardest part for me. First off, let me say that the document I handed you, I would like you to enter that into the record as part of this public hearing. And I've been thinking about this for a couple of weeks, and I, and I can't even put it into words because it, it goes against everything I believe an elected official is, you know, elected for. And I've been trying to figure out why an elected official would advocate his authority for using the tax dollars of his citizens to an unelected, appointed committee in specific project areas. Now, I know it's been said that the council wants to keep its options open for projects in these areas. Something may come up, you know, that sounds like a good project, but it's only in those three areas. What about areas around the city that may have, maybe hurting for development and need infrastructure, or need some form of financial, you know, incentive? Why are you limiting yourself? I see it as a limitation not to close these areas, take responsibility of the money that would come to the city. And what if a business wants to expand up by the airport, but needs the infrastructure? You've got 500 and some thousand dollars plus coming in. What if the Brighton Avenue corridor needs some expansion, some widening, and there's a plan for that already? Can't do it through urban renewal because it's not in an urban renewal revenue allocation area. Can't do it for Thane Road either. Can't do it for anything other than those three areas. So as an elected official, is it your intention to say, you know, this, this $1.3 million that's coming in, diverted money that's coming into urban renewal, I don't really want to be in charge of that? I, I want these people that are sitting on, these private citizens that we've appointed to this board, I want them to be in charge of it. I want to take my responsibility and give it to them. Is that, is that your intention? Because that goes against everything I believe in as an elected official. I mean, I run for an office for a specific reason. I want to be in charge of those kind of decisions. Those are tough decisions, how to spend the money, what projects to fund. But I want to be in charge of them, and that's why I run. I, I don't want to advocate that to somebody else. I mean, what, what's the point of that? But what you're doing is giving control of that money. As is mentioned in your Plan Two, mostly on pages 14 and 15, titled Eligible Project Activities and Plan Administration, 11 times it's mentioned what you can do with the money by state code. That's where, that's who you're giving the responsibility to. The state's going to tell you what you can and can't do with the money. I mean, urban renewal is regulated through CITO Code, Title 50. Somebody's even using this. It's got the stickies on it. Anyway, I would think that the council would want to be in charge of that. I would also think if you're getting a 12 to 1 return on your money, I would think, why wait four years to put that road in? Why not fund it now? The city has $2.8 million in foregone taxes, plus the amount of money you would get by closing these revenue allocation areas. Or that might be, actually, I think that's the total that you could levy, 2.8 million. You have enough money right now to pay your share of the road. The port can levy over $800,000 with the 3% in foregone taxes, but they choose not to. Now it becomes a political thing. Nobody wants to be seen as the bad guy raising taxes. People like pointing fingers at the county, though. But nobody wants to be the bad guy to raise taxes. You have the capability, and you have the money. It's there. Why wait four years to fund a road when you can do it in one year? If you're getting 12 to 1 on your money, why would you wait, why would you wait 12, four years to get a 12 to 1 return? Why not do it next year? Boom, start getting your return. You know, I, I believe there is a positive in development attitude, investment climate in the valley. We're seeing a lot of new construction. Mr. DiMatto is experiencing some of that positive investment climate right now. Coming up later on your agenda. Please take my comments, you know, for what they're worth into your deliberations for your, for your future ordinance. But we would ask that it did not be read and not be streamlined also, if the consideration is to forego some of the readings and take into consideration that there's money out there to do the projects. You just, you just need to utilize it the proper way. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Mr. Mayor? I have some comments in response to Commissioner Havens, and feel free to respond if you'd like.
If I can't answer the question, one of these other smarter county folks I'm sure can.
Okay. There was an email that was sent out to all of us on an unrelated matter, and our, this is a quote, a direct quote from our city attorney. It says, "It is the appearance of impropriety that one needs to consider as well." And I also have another quote here from Friday, May 23rd of this year, 2014, from the Lewiston Tribune, from columnist Marty Trillhouse. He says, "Public trust is such a fragile thing that anyone in public life has to guard against the appearance, not merely the fact, of divided loyalties." And here we were given this, this trifold that was, that was sent out to the citizens in 2005. And in it, it says, "If bonds are paid off, the revenue allocation area expires." To me, in my opinion, ethically, I can't vote to keep these districts open because it goes against my morals. That's all I had to say. You can respond.
Well, we've made that point, Councilman Johnson, thank you. We've made that point before in some of the past minutes, and I think I even submitted to the council a packet with those actual minutes in them, where those comments were made. A similar item, I believe, and Mr. Dornsfeld, the port manager is here, I don't see any commissioners, though, but I, I wondered if the port commissioner has a conflict of interest. It's most of the projects you're talking about tonight are on port property or streets adjacent to the port. How does that work with the conflict of interest? Is the port benefiting from those projects? And as a voting member on the URA, how, what kind of appearance is that? I was told that there was no conflict, but the appearance is certainly there, so that's a decision for those that are involved in it to make some. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Have anybody else wishing to testify for or against?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Dale Aldrich. I live at 2914 Metalark Drive here in Lewiston. First of all, I'd like to just say thanks for the opportunity to come and chat a little bit about, about the Urban Renewal Agency. And I guess go on the record that I'm going to speak in favor of the agency and in favor of, of the plan as presented in front of you. I'm a little bit confused. I'm not sure that Commissioner Havens was speaking on his personal behalf, or was he speaking on behalf of all the elected officials of the county, or what? So I, I just, I want to put that as a question. I'm, I'm not really sure about that, Doug. I couldn't get that from that. The other thing I'd like to say is, is I'm really proud to be a citizen of Lewiston. And I, I moved to Lewiston in, in 1977. This is a great community, and it's, it's significantly different today than it was in 1977, and actually in July 1 of 1977 when, when I moved here. Also, I'd just like to say that, that I, I feel humbled and, and honored to, over the years, to have been able to serve our community. I was a staff member here at Lewis Clark State College for 10 years. I served as a manager of the Port of Lewiston for three years. I, I spent 14 years as a commissioner at Port of Lewiston. And then, one of the things I'm really proud of is I also served as one of the very first board members of the Urban Renewal Agency when it was first put together. I found interesting, and, and I'm kind of going away from my notes here because I'm, I'm responding a little bit, the concept of, the concept of abdication that Commissioner Havens raised there. When the, when the Urban Renewal Board was first put together, that was, that was discussed at length, as I remember it. And guess what? There were elected officials named and put on the Urban Renewal Board because of that very issue, okay? So that there were people that were responsible and elected by, by the people within the county and within the city that were on the board and helping direct and organize and put together the, the future of the URA. There was a member of the city council, there was a member of the port commission, there's a member of the county commission. So you had, you had elected officials, in fact, there with their eye on, on what was going on in urban renewal. As to the streets in, in, over in the Port of Lewiston area, I'd just comment, those are city streets. Those, those don't belong to, to the port. And so if you talk about conflicts of interest, any, all the entities benefit from the, the efforts of the Urban Renewal Agency. So I, I don't believe that's, that's an issue at all, okay? I, I take, I look at the Urban Renewals Agency, it, it's a natural extension of what has, what has happened in the community over the years. I remember, 1987, the Lewiston City Council, the County Commission, Nez Perce County Commission, and the Port of Lewiston Commissioners got together, and they established a joint effort for economic development in our community. It was called the Tri-Municipal Agreement. That, that agreement moved forward, and there were economic development efforts made by the Tri-Municipal Group, okay? That then morphed into Valley Vision. That came about, I believe, in 1996 or '97, something like that. And the, because of the efforts of, of the Tri-Municipal Agreement and the recognition that maybe our community could do more, the private sector stepped up to a factor of three times the resources that the public sector was putting into the effort, and the private sector put three times more than that into it annually to create economic activity within, within our community. The URA was, was, is an extension, a continuation of that joint effort. Again, a joint effort by the private, private sector and the three commissions within Nez Perce County, being again, the port, the city, and the county. It, it was just a development that came along that made it so that we could move forward faster. We had Valley Vision, that's the marketing, sales department. And then we developed and put in place the URA, which became our infrastructure development department in conjunction with other agencies. Think of all the successes over the years that we've, we've experienced because of joint cooperation between the city, the county, the port, the private sector. The list is long. And I, I mean, this afternoon, before I came over here, I just kind of started thinking about a few of the things that have happened. And, and some of these are before URA. For example, do we remember that Blunt Industries, which was later acquired by ATK? They did a major expansion here in Lewiston. Frankly, that would not have happened if it hadn't been for joint efforts, again, by the city, county, port. We got state dollars, we got EDA dollars, and that brought about the, the expansion of their facilities up south of the airport, which then, again, expanded into the Southport Industrial Development Area. And look at all the jobs that have been created out there, you know, from that kind of, kind of effort. Then you look at communication infrastructure in our city didn't exist if it hadn't been, again, by the push made by Valley Vision, again, in support of city, county, port, et cetera. You know, you look at the new development over in northeast Lewiston, the Business and Technology Park. And I think about Schweitzer Engineering making the decision to come here, okay? They could not have just immediately moved on to that, the, the property that they acquired if it hadn't been for the URA, which put in the last amount, a necessary investment to make that property sellable to, to an operation like Schweitzer Engineering. This is a valuable, valuable resource. Think about Delta Airlines. Again, comes about because their expansion here came because of all this cooperation and working, working together. How about the library? I mean, that, that is the biggest, one of the best developments that has happened in this city since 1977. I go down to that section of Lewiston today, folks, we need to be proud of that and think about the, the contribution to that, again, made by the URA. The way I look at it is, now is not the time to back off. We need to keep working at it. The job is not done. We have vehicles in place that we can utilize and push our community forward. I think that as elected officials, okay, I, I think it's our responsibility. It's our responsibility to look to the future of our community, you know? And, and there's a couple of things that I've always tried to, tried to think about, you know, when I sat all those years on the port commission and, and other boards and stuff. I came across a thing and I, a saying that, that I, I try to apply even in my business today, and that is, think global, act local, and think for the future and act now. Thanks for your time.
David Dornsfeld, 1010 Hemlock Avenue, manager of Port of Lewiston. I'm speaking tonight in support of retaining the three revenue allocation areas. The discussion about closing down revenue allocation areas is not because they are not meeting their intended purpose or that they are not working. On the contrary, development in all three of the revenue allocation areas has greatly outpaced the rest of the community. The city, county, and port have partnered together for years on economic development. All three entities supported the creation of the Urban Renewal Agency because we needed options to fund infrastructure improvements, and we still need options. It's a simple fact that you cannot have economic development without infrastructure development. Say it again. You're not going to have economic development without infrastructure development. Utilizing tax increment financing within revenue allocation areas provides a proven successful option for funding infrastructure projects. Property tax revenue from new development within the revenue allocation area pays for the needed infrastructure improvements. Now the city, county, and port can debate about who is responsible for financing infrastructure improvements, but if the goal is economic development, tax increment financing provides an option for all three government entities to continue to work together to create jobs. A couple of points I would like to make, you know, that have come up today. Within the plan, it shows a number of possible infrastructure projects that the port is considering over the next several years. And, and within just the last 60 days, we've completed a North Port Transportation Study and a Harry Wall Master Plan. The port was asked to provide those master plans to the URA for inclusion of possible projects. It was never meant as a laundry list of, gosh, here's just, you know, everything from soup to nuts that the port wants, you know, funded by the Urban Renewal Agency. On the contrary, a, a number of the council members and Urban Renewal Agency members and, and I think some of the county commissioners went on a bus tour of, of the community and possible projects. And we discussed at that, on that bus tour, that the, the number one goal, the thing that the port would like to see improve the most would be the streets in north Lewiston. It isn't that laundry list of, of projects within our master plan, it's simply, you know, fixing streets that are deteriorating and falling apart, they're city streets, they need to be improved, you know, the, the city resources are... need to be improved, you know, the, the city resources are scarce, here's an option utilizing Urban Renewal Agency funds that could be utilized to fund those street improvements. You know, that, that's it in a nutshell. And, and when you just, you know, as a practical sense, you look at, now, the, the Urban Renewal Agency runs, I think, what we got left, about ten years, I believe, on the plan, Laura? Twelve? Fifteen years left on the plan. So if you look at it as a practical sense, you're limited by how much money you've got coming in and the time limit to pay off the bonds. So on a practical sense, you probably have enough time to do one project, possibly two, but, you know, more than likely just one project left within, within that timeframe. So there, there isn't going to be this laundry list of, you know, six different port projects you could take on. You know, if you got the streets done and it's funded within that time period, you know, you'd probably get the bonds paid off, there'd be, you know, four years left with, before the agency sunsets, and there wouldn't be enough time to even take on another project. One of the things that Commissioner Havens brought up, and, and I know, I don't know if you just, have to say, if you just keep saying this over and over again, it must be true, but it is not. And that's the, the premise that, that this, the, the Urban Renewal Agency was set up to do three specific projects and be done. It was, you know, and when the, when the Urban Renewal Agency kind of first started, Bob Tippett and I were probably the two biggest advocates going about trying to develop an Urban Renewal Agency. And it was set up over a twenty-four year period, and the, the language says that when the bonds are paid off, you can close the agency. It doesn't say three specific projects, it's just simply said, when the bonds are paid off, and that was meant in a practical sense that you may, you know, do, you could have a, a project, say, in downtown, and if you pay it off in ten years and there's still enough time there, you might do a second project, or if there even is enough time, there might be a third, but it was never meant that we're going to do three projects and then out. I think at the time the, the Urban Renewal Agency was formed and the first plan was put together, there wasn't even a, a project listed for downtown Lewiston at the, at that time. So, you know, regarding the, the trifold brochure that was put out, that was something I think Bob Tippett found the other day, and Bob can't even tell you whether or not that thing even went out to the public. So I mean, just to characterize, I, I wouldn't say that this trifold brochure was submitted to the public as, as something that went out for information, I, I don't even think Bob will stipulate that that happened. But I will say, again, you go back, you read the language, it says, when the bonds are paid off, and that was meant not for three specific projects, but if you have run the course and you get down the last three years, there's simply not going to be enough time to do another bond, therefore you might retire the agency early because there's no, no outstanding bonds. With that, I appreciate the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Dave.
Dan Anderson, fourteen oh nine Birch Avenue here in Lewiston. I guess I'm going to have a couple of disagreements with my good friend, Mr. Doringsfeld. I, I guess what I do is I read it a completely different way, and it's, and, and I understand that, that in the course of, of, of looking at a plan, it can be looked at a couple different ways. Here's the way that I took it. If there were some major plan that the Urban Renewal Agency wished to do at the time, they were given up to twenty-nine years to fund that, but just because they were given that for a specific project doesn't mean that you all of a sudden just say, well, gee, we have fifteen more years that we can do something. The reason I say that, one of the second bullet points that I saw Ms. Von Tersch put up here said that we're talking about increased valuation. Nobody in this room is going to share anything for at least another fifteen years if we continue it. Oh, it's there. It's there for the Urban Renewal Agency to determine where they want to spend it with the okay of the city of Lewiston. My personal feeling is, and I was not there, but I did not believe then and I do not believe now, the Urban Renewal Agency was ever formed with the intent that it would do what I believe the Port of Lewiston has the ability to do for itself. The Port of Lewiston, in fact, I was even reminded today that in the furtherance of port law, that they are to construe any laws that, that apply to the port very liberally. I believe that if the Port of Lewiston thinks that the Harry Wall Project, and I, I heard my good friend, Mr. Doringsfeld, say, that may or may not be on the table, but they have the money to do those things with. I, I, I know that, and it was spoke here just a little earlier, and I don't remember who it was who said, you know, if you're able to get urban renewal money, let's not call it urban renewal money, that's my tax dollars, it's everybody in here, it's everyone's tax dollars, but it doesn't have the same kind of effect. If urban renewal wishes to, to have plans to, to build something, gee, we don't even have to have a vote on it, do we? If the city council decides they want to, to do a project, or the urban renewal decides they want to do a project that normally would take a vote, gee, we don't have to worry about it. We've got the money, the city of Lewiston buys off on it, we can build it. The state is replete with those types of things, city halls, I believe it's a courthouse, fire stations, certainly does do away with the pesky ballot box. But having said that, I don't believe that urban renewal is the place to use in the Port of Lewiston that is its own economic driver. What that means then is that there is accountability, there's clarity, we're going to increase our taxes, or we're going to spend some of our five million dollars and we're going to invest it here. I believe they have that ability, and I believe that, that, that they should take that, take that initiative. That's my feelings. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, public at large, Dan Marsh, twenty-three seventeen Fourteenth Street, an original member of the U R A, actually going back to nineteen ninety-nine. Butch Alfred, myself, are the two original members and have been members since then, that time. It was two thousand and five when we actually formalized and had our, our plan that we have before us today. Good comments both sides of, of the coin, the aisle, but I want to, and I won't reiterate those pieces, but results, results and momentum. We have momentum, we've had, have had it for the last two or three years, we're continuing with momentum. You can see it in our, our building permits, you can see what's happening, the enthusiasm downtown, what's going on with our city. If it's a bad plan, other cities throughout the state certainly don't think so, or they'll, they're, they're happy to continue to operate with their bad plan. Talked to Twins, Twin Falls with Giovanni Yogurt, and what they had to do with their financing and partnerships to, to make that happen. And isn't it ironic that the reason why we're here today, it's a wonderful thing, we really should be celebrating, I think we should be celebrating more with the county. Why we've got a little bit of this struggle is beyond me. We are the county, the county is us, we're eighty-eight, ninety, whatever percent you call it, we should be celebrating. What a wonderful problem that we have that we're tug of war. Over the last forty years, the city of Lewiston has grown anywhere between one and two percent. Ms. Von Tersch told you, and the facts are there, Mr. Anderson can even confirm that, we have a twelve-hundred percent return on those dollars. Results, results, we are still in a momentum phase. So I would ask council to continue to support the U R A. It's been mentioned and documented before, never once ever has it been documented that the U R A board said, we're going to do one project in each area and we're out of here. Now that was a criticism of some of the folks that oppose the U R A, and that is, you know the bad thing about a U R A, I've heard, is once you start them, they just never go away. Well, that's not necessarily true. I think we pride ourselves, we've done our homework, and, you know, there's much, there's more to do, but we're, you know, we're getting closer, and I wanted to make one more mention. I, I looked briefly at Commissioner Havens' letter about new construction, how that would be lost, that's not, that's not quite correct. New construction per state law will go back to two thousand and five, and that is not lost, it's just rolled over. So if we close the area next year or ten years from now, the state allows you to go back to two thousand and five, and those dollars are not lost, they are rolled forward. So, anyway, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Marsh.
Yes, please.
In the February twenty-third, twenty-eleven article of the Lewiston Tribune, it says, quote, from you, "The Lewiston Urban Renewal Agency is holding about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in property tax dollars generated from escalations in downtown values and expects to get about three hundred and twenty-five thousand more this year," Marsh said. "It needs to come up with a project to spend it on or turn it back to the entities that normally would have received it," he said, "and no one wants to do that." Can you explain what you meant by that?
Be happy to, counselor, is the point, last point I just made, and that is, if there are legitimate projects, we need to invest and continue to, to do so, which we found. If not, then we need to return it to the citizens. In that point, I would agree wholeheartedly with the county. If there are not viable projects, then we should return it.
Okay, thank you.
Please, and Mike, come on.
My name is Bill Chetwood, I've lived here since nineteen fifty-seven, and I'm looking and seeing this controversy going on, and I've watched this, and the biggest problem that we've had is lack of communication on this whole deal. We get a little bit of information out of this person, a little bit more out of somebody else, and we don't get the complete story. And I blame part of it on the Lewiston Tribune, because they don't give us as much, but probably they have a reason, because they have a lot of people who won't read that anyway. Okay, that's true, very probably true. But you look and see what's going on here tonight, we have intelligent people that we elect to office that don't seem to be on the same page, and we don't have the public on the same page. We're not getting the information that we need, and it leads to distrust. I'm just an ordinary guy, haven't been a little better educated formally than some. I read the Tribune, I take, pay attention. We're not having enough communication from the port, from the city council. I made a point when Brad Cannon was on the council, I said, you know, the problem is communication, and the council is not communicating properly with the public, so consequently it leads to distrust. I still make that, that point, and I think that you should give that, as long with the other entities, public entities should do the same thing. One of the problems we have too is that we have economic development structure tied in with the Port of Lewiston. Now, we did elect to give them the money originally, and they said, and they maintain right now, and they are apparently in the black on their Port of Lewiston bookkeeping, but we still have the tax, and all of a sudden it is into an economic development end that we don't vote on, we don't get to vote on that. And so this leads to distrust on the part of the people that are paying the bills. So you've got to keep that in mind. If you want lack, or if you want more harmony, let's have a little better understanding so that we can trust who's doing the job. Thank you very much.
Mike Lorenz, four-fifty-eight Crestline Circle Drive. I guess my comment on this whole urban renewal deal is, I guess my tax dollars already support, you know, the port all by itself, its own taxing entity, and then it just seems like they became a lamprey, and let's attach to Lewiston and we can get some more tax dollars, and it just seems like it's snowballed from there. I think this urban renewal can be a good thing if it's used right, but it just seems like, well, we're going to go purchase this property for four million dollars, and we're going to tell these businesses what they can do, or we're going to put an extension on the Gun Club Road, but we aren't really concerned that we're dumping all this traffic on a substandard road. And when I'm talking to one of the mechanics, I ask, well, what are we going to do about upgrading this road? Well, we'll worry about it later. Well, that pretty much shows you that this thing there up there at that, those box stores sounds a little shady to me because there's no, okay, so what's going to happen to this road? What's it going to cost the taxpayers? You know, I keep hearing, you know, it's all about the port and urban renewal, but it is, it is taxpayers' money, and you, people were elected to be good stewards of our money, and I go out there nilly-willy and throw it away. You know, you do have a responsibility to the public, and you need to remember that. I, you know, it's just like, amazed me when we get stiff, four hundred thousand dollars for this piece of property that the assessor said it was worth about two hundred and sixty thousand, and there was no negotiation, the port said, tough luck, buddy, this is what you're paying. So why would I, you know, have a whole lot of faith in the Port of Lewiston when they obviously sit there and stick it to the taxpayers of Lewiston? Well, that didn't sound like a real good deal to me, it sounded like, we're going to get ours and the hell with you. So I think this gentleman was right, he said, maybe we need to work together a little better, but, you know, I just think some of these projects just need to go away and you need to pick ones that will work, and all I keep hearing is downtown Lewiston, downtown Lewiston, well, what about the Wurchards? I mean, what are these people up there, chump change? You know, it's all like, oh, we're going to create this big downtown again, well, it's been there, done there, you know, it's nice to fix up these stores, but, you know, what about the rest of the city? You know, I think you also need to pay attention to the rest of it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, well, I guess we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. At this point, we're just accepting the revised plan.
You're just closing the public hearing, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have an ordinance on the agenda later.
So I'm just closing the public hearing and away we go.
May I ask you a question? Earlier we were asked by Commissioner Havens to submit this two-page document, I just questioned, who's it being submitted by? Is it the county, is it an individual? On the bottom, there are four names on this letterhead, is it being submitted by all of these persons, and do they all have to acknowledge that they have submitted it, or can it be submitted generically with, with, as it is, with no signature or whatever? Do you need any, or some help here?
I'm, I'm just guessing at, at this point, but at the very top of it, it has their letterhead and starts off with, "The Nez Perce, the Nez Perce Board of County Commissioners respectfully request that the city of Lewiston, Idaho decline adoption of the presently recommended plan," dot, 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 dot. So, I would assume.
I was wondering that same thing, though.
Oh, no, I, I, I see, but it's on her.
It's a courtesy to sign.
I agree.
The letter you're submitting for testimony.
So we'll assume it's being submitted by the whole Board of County Commissioners?
I, that's the way I would read it.
Okay.
Okay, so that's that. On to the consent agenda.
Do you want to take a break?
Oh, certainly. Should we give them the time? Why don't we take a four-minute recess?
Maybe don't you four minutes?
Be back in four minutes.
Four minutes?
All right, everybody, welcome back. We're now on to item five on our consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove Pathologist Regional Lab from the vouchers payable, and as a separate action item for the active agenda, action item F, because that's my place of employment, so I need to recuse myself.
Okay. Did you just want to pull the whole, whole accounts, or just that single line item?
Just that single line item.
Can you work that math out quick, Carrie?
Is it on just the first report or two?
It's on the...
The second report, I think.
I think it's the first, 5/22.
May 22nd.
So the 5/19 through 5/22. And it's on top of the fourth page, ninth page. You got it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Approving the minutes of the May 12th, 2014 budget work session, May 12th, 2014 regular meeting, and the May 19th, 2014 special work session. Accepting the minutes of the April 11th, 2014 Historic Preservation Commission, April 15th, 2014 Parks and Recreation Commission, April 23rd Planning and Zoning Commission, May 20th Solid Waste Advisory Commission, and the May 7th, 2014 Transportation Advisory Commission. Approving Resolution 2014-14 by title only. A resolution declaring various items of municipal property to be surplus and providing an effective date. Approving Resolution 2014-34 by title only. A resolution approving a state-local agreement between the City of Lewiston and Idaho Municipal Corporation and the Idaho Transportation Department for securing the services of a consultant for project development services associated with the improvements on 18th Avenue from 8th Street to 10th Street in Lewiston. Authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest respectively set agreement and providing an effective date. Approving Resolution 2014-33 by title only. A resolution accepting and approving a dedication of right-of-way from the City of Lewiston to the City of Lewiston for public use and providing an effective date. Approving the bid award for liquid asphalt to Idaho Asphalt of Hauser, Idaho in the amount of $875 per ton for MCW 800, $580 per ton for CSS-1, and $535 per ton for Quick Seal, an estimated annual of $183,715. Approving the vouchers payable for April 25th, 2014 through May 8th, 2014 in the amount of $1,168,638.91 and May 9th, 2014 through May 22nd, 2014 in the amount of $1,277,881.23. Thank you.
Councilors, the consent agenda has been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Now, onto the active agenda. This is the first reading of ordinance 4607, amending the urban renewal plan for the North Lewiston Tax Revenue Allocation Area, the Nez Perce Terrace Tax Revenue Allocation Area, and the Downtown Lewiston Tax Revenue Allocation Area. I'll entertain a motion to read ordinance 4607 for the first time.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to read, ordinance 4607. Discussion. Counselor Daniel?
I have a serious concern, that I only noticed because we had such a long presentation. The very beginning of the ordinance actually starts on, at the last half of that first paragraph, it says, "Providing for, providing for limitation on actions against the amended plan after 30 days from the effective date of this ordinance, providing for a waiver of the reading rules, providing for separability and providing an effective date." So, if we read this right now, are, this is just going to be a one-time reading?
No.
I've never seen that on these resolutions. I've never noticed that.
You're just not going to read the entire ordinance, either by title.
Okay.
So that's the waiver of the reading rules? Okay. What about the limitation on actions against the amended plan after 30 days from the effective date?
That's part of the statute, that, that any plan or amended plan can be challenged within 30 days of the date of passage. So that's just part of the statute.
Which would be after the third, potential third reading.
After the adoption, that's correct.
Okay. Other comments?
I have a minute.
Certainly.
No, I still just think it's, I think we need to close the districts down, just to make it simple. I think we've gone back and forth on it, I'm sure I'll have more comments when it goes to the next reading. We will have three readings on this, correct?
Correct. And there is a meeting tomorrow at noon.
One of my concerns is, by doing this, we're going to have our streets underfunded by over 50%. And we hope that the URA will fund some street projects, but even in the current plan, they're calling for a proposed incubator, incubator site, and that may be a good idea, it may not be, but why would we underfund our streets if we're not even currently meeting the maintenance level?
I guess my, my concern, and I don't disagree with you at all, Counselor, some of what I see, I would offer, that yes, the city owns the streets out in the Port District, and the city should be maintaining them. I don't know, that's, that's the URA's job, you know, just to, to be performing what I would consider our maintenance for those streets. Now, on the other hand, and I've brought this up at several meetings before, I don't know what kind of mechanism would be in place. The reason why those streets are in such poor shape, and will continue to be in poor shape, is because of the industrial traffic that's generated by the users, tenants, landowners out in the Port District. So you've got heavy-duty, heavy industrial traffic out there that has beaten the streets up. Should they be fixed by the city? I think that's the proper role of the city, but do they need to be fixed right now? I don't look at that as a high-traffic area for people driving around in sedans. You know, we're talking about pedestrian mobility and stuff like that. I get out to the port quite a bit. That is not an activity that routinely takes place out there. So I'm kind of averse to spending money there. Now, do I advocate closing the two areas up right now? I'm really not in favor of that either. They've given us several different projects to take a look at. The incubator idea, while it sounds good on paper, you know, where's it going to go? Because if the city builds an incubator, I mean, it's basically, it's a tax-free entity. If it gets built on port ground, the port doesn't pay the property taxes. You know, there's no PILT money coming in, which would be a payment in lieu of taxes to cover, so if they, if they build a building, say it's a million-dollar building, and then people are in there, well, there's no property tax dollars being paid. So I do have a problem with that, you know, that PILT funding, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, it's the same mechanism the federal government uses for basically paying Idaho County, Clearwater County, for the amount of public land that they own in the county that doesn't pay property taxes. So, there would be no payment like that forthcoming from the port. So, that area, I have kind of a problem with. The Nez Perce Terrace is a different deal. Yeah, there's a lot of questions on it. Do I think it'd be a good idea to have another east-west connector in this town? You bet. You know, if we can help facilitate that, but there's still some unanswered issues, primarily the Gun Club interchanges. I'm not so much worried about the Lapway Road northern end of Gun Club, but that southern end, that's, that's going to be impacted heavily. So, but at this time, I'm just, I guess I have a problem with just saying, we're going to close these two districts now. I guess we can, you know, we do have three readings on this, like, it's good to get some of our thoughts out. There is another meeting that they're having tomorrow, where I think they'll have a ranked prioritization list forthcoming on what they'd like to see done, and maybe at that time, at the next reading, we can, we can say yea or nay, or start going down the list. That's just my opinion, so take it for what it's worth, but I'm open for any other comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Randall?
On this ordinance proposal, section seven, says, "The city council finds that development of the Nez Perce Terrace project area, as provided in the amended plan, is necessary and appropriate to facilitate proper growth and development of the community accordance with sound planning standards and local community objectives." Again, I can't see why a URA can neglect or ignore a city resolution that was made prior to its, its starting that area. It's like, now that we've come in, we don't have to obey the rules. I mean, if you, the resolution that I found at the Port District's website says that the developer will pay the cost of doing the streets. They did make a few exceptions for turn, or stoplights and stuff like that. They made a few exceptions for that, but other than that, the developer's supposed to pay for those streets, not half and half. And so that's my... And so that's my problem with the Nessburst Terrace project. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I also agree with shutting down both districts. And as far as the roads go, I did a request for our Public Works Director, and he gave us a hundred pages of streets and all their OCI pavement index ratings, and just counting, I found ninety-five roads that are at their absolute worst category, zero. And not very many of them were up in North Lewiston. And there's plenty of areas, and that's not even counting, you know, the areas that have, that are in the teens or just below fifty. Our target rate is seventy-seven percent, and it's that bad outside of all these other areas. And then we even just heard today that we may get an update on another $400,000 that we may lose as a result of a tax levy. That's yet to be confirmed, but, you know, we're bordering on a crisis with our roads. And if we could just close these districts down, we could take that money and start prioritizing and allocating that money to the roads that need it the most, and those aren't necessarily the roads that are in the North Lewiston District.
Counselor Blakely.
Early on in this meeting, when we heard from one of the early speakers, you would be led to believe that the URA was this out-of-control animal that was just gonna approve, and we had no reins on it or controls on it. And that's absolutely not the truth. Having served on, having now been on that committee, it's opened my eyes. When I campaigned, in one of the very first public meetings, I came out and said that, you know, we might wanna close one and two. Maybe I said, "We should close one and two." And later on, in another campaign, or another meeting, I had an opportunity before, between then, to spend some time and visit with city officials and get educated and get a little bit smarter. And it's amazing what you can do with correct information, what I believe is the correct information. And I changed my position. So someone said to me, "You're waffling." And I said, "I'm proud to waffle. I'm proud to seek information. I'm proud to ask questions and go out and try to find more information. And if it means changing my views, and I'm not so dogmatic, and I'm so stuck in one way that I will vote yes or no all the time, no, I'm proud that I waffled, that I changed my position on this." Having served on the Urban Renewal District Board now, or Renewal Agency, excuse me, I'm proud to say that the members on this committee, we're all taxpayers. Every one of us gotta pay taxes. Every one of us are concerned about every dollar we're being spent. I'm looking forward tomorrow to the report that both Joe Hewitt and Joanne Cole Hansen are putting together, where they're gonna spend the time now and rank, help us decide as a committee, rank all of the different options that we're looking at. Right now, we're talking in broad terms. Tomorrow, we're gonna start to get down some of the more meaty issues. And I suspect that two or three of the issues, or two or three of the areas or projects that you're hearing right now talk about, that maybe you have, or we are opposed to, you're gonna find out that they're not gonna get enough of a rating, that the Urban Renewal Agency isn't gonna consider them as a project. And I wouldn't be surprised that when we get done, we come out with one or two recommendations to bring forward. So I would encourage, at this point in time, that we go forward and consider, and consider, and let your renewal district play out, if you wanna use that term. Let's use the expertise of Joe Hewitt and Joanne Butch, Doug. Doug's a voice. At times, he's totally different than the rest of us, but he's a voice that's being heard. We hear him, and it's good to hear that. And he brought up a good point. There isn't enough attendance from the public at these meetings. I heard Dr. Chetwood talk about, "He's not informed." If you have to rely on the Tribune, no shots it gets a Tribune, but if you have to rely on the Tribune for your only source of information, they're a newspaper. They've gotta sell subscriptions. Our minutes are posted on the website. People can draw, people can go read the minutes of the meetings. People can attend the meetings. Public comment is encouraged at every meeting. We have meetings that aren't attended. Counselor Johnson suggested that we go to some evening meetings. We have done those. We've gotten okay attendance, but no greater than the noon meetings. I hope tomorrow that we get good attendance. We want, we want input. We wanna hear from the city. It's kinda not fair to complain if you don't show up. But that's why we're elected. That's why, again, we have all been elected to try to represent you all faithfully and respectfully.
Other comments? Counselor Daniel.
Which proj, Counselor Blakely?
Yes, sir.
As our liaison to the URA, which projects are you referring to that you don't think will make the cut?
Oh, I'll be the, oh. I will leave that up, if you're asking my personal opinion, or are you asking the council or the agency's opinion? Because I think tomorrow, after we see this ranking, I'll have a better feel for the importance of the projects, so I will defer that. My, my personal, you're asking my personal feelings? I still have, like all of you, I have some questions about some of the port projects. I, I look at them and say, "Are we really gonna get the biggest bang for our bucks?" I'm hoping tomorrow to get more clarification when Joanne and Joe present the rankings of some of the projects. And I suspect that some of my personal feelings will be confirmed.
I guess for me, I just wish that we actually had that real list that we were gonna vote on as opposed to just a big wish list of things we could possibly do. I wish we actually had it nailed down already in that priority, so we knew, okay, yes, that's a good idea. But right now, it's, well, there's a bunch of stuff we could do in both areas, and we hope it all turns out great, and just let us take care of it in the URA. And I don't know, I guess that's, that didn't sit well with me.
No, I agree with you a hundred percent. You know, looking at some of these sections, Section 6, "Development of North Lewiston project areas provided for the amended plan is necessary and appropriate." Well, yes or no, but again, is that really the function of the URA to do that North Port traffic upgrade, or is it really the port? Or is it just the city on down the road, when we have the money and the time and the resources to allocate to that particular area as we roll through town fixing up streets? So.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Randall.
Thank you. On the North Port, I think, I agree that the port provides an important economic revenue area for the whole city, but like you're saying, you know, the city, are we really responsible totally for the streets over there? I don't think so. I think, I think, I think the port and some of the businesses over there that use those streets should be putting money into it, and along with the city. The city's got some responsibility there, but I don't think we should have to pay the whole bill.
We, through part of our sanitation budget, you know, of course, if you're not aware of it, there is a factor built into our sanitation budget that pays an impact fee for the extra wear and tear that the sanitation trucks put on our city streets, and that's been in there. So it's, basically, it's an impact fee. How we implement it, I don't know. That's, that's a, I guess, subject for a different day. Getting back to your comments about Mr. Chetwood. Again, a lot of people don't know about things, as we saw from the letter to the editor from my good friend Susan Wing here about a week and a half ago. And she said she was gonna write the letter, and she did. These meetings, now, I know we're not required to broadcast meetings, but there is no reason why we can't broadcast those work session meetings onto either our website or wherever for people to be able to watch that can't make it to the meetings. You know, I don't know where it ends. I mean, the county doesn't broadcast their meetings. They're all open. Our meetings are all open. I don't know how many people are watching this. My wife can't watch it, 'cause we don't have cable on. So once we went to DirecTV, my wife can't watch me on TV anymore. So apparently, the only people that get to see the city council, you know, you're, we have restricted the amount of population that gets to, via broadcast, attend the meeting, 'cause they have different forms of getting their entertainment. So anyways, Counselor Blakely.
Well, now, we know why you've stopped wearing a tie and a sport coat. Your wife doesn't get this on television anymore. My point is, in today's work session, we looked at columns of what 1%, 2%, 3%, and 4% gives us as far as tax increases. Way over to the right, 4% was an information officer. You know, maybe, as we go down the road and talk more about items like we're talking about, maybe an information officer is more important than I initially gave it thought. That may be a role that we need to do, and that may be the person who spearheads making sure all of our, all of these meetings are televised, and we can do a better job of getting information out to the public. And I'm assuming that would be the role of that person if we were to pursue that.
Counselor Collins.
Back to the URA, I wanna say, first and foremost, from what I've seen and what's been presented, in my opinion, the URA's been good for the city. I think it's been good for the county and what it's brought in. I'm gonna probably surprise Councilman Daniel in agreeing with him that I'd like to see a little bit more of what the money is going to be spent for and spent on. I like that. In reading the plan itself, in conclusion, there was a statement in there, and I had an opportunity to visit with one of our residents this weekend, that says, "The believes exercising the powers provided by the statute will benefit all residents of the community." I don't particularly like all and none statements, and I will say, the Nessburst Terrace, at least with the individual I was visiting with, wasn't, isn't, wasn't a good thing for them. They live in the Tree Street area and between the Walmart and Switzer's Development. Some of the things that have happened in there haven't been good for them. And so, and I'd like to, if nothing else, make a statement for Bob and the URA Committee to maybe take a look at some of those things and see where, not everything is necessarily good for all of our citizens with some of the development that is occurring. I think in general for the city, I think, yes, you can make that statement, but I have a hard time when you, when you wanna say, "This is good for everybody."
Further comments? Okay, the motion is to read for the first time, Ordinance 4607. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Show of hands, did you get that? Those in favor? Okay. Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries five to two.
Approving the first reading, Ordinance 4607, by title only, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewiston, Idaho, amending the urban renewal plan for the North Lewiston Tax Revenue Allocation Area, the Nessburst Terrace Tax Revenue Allocation Area, and the Downtown Lewiston Tax Revenue Allocation Area, authorizing the city clerk to transmit a copy of this ordinance and other required information to the Nessburst County and other officials, providing for a limitation on actions against the amended plan after thirty days from the effective date of the ordinance, providing for a waiver of the reading rules, providing for separability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Carrie. Okay, so we do have two more chances to literally beat this one to death, so hopefully we'll have some good information from the meeting tomorrow, and maybe we can start whittling things down. And we'll, as long as we reach a decision, let's do it for the right reasons, whichever that may be. Okay, moving on, active item Agenda B, Resolution 2014-42, approving the purchase of services off the state list between the city and Verizon Wireless, a corporation authorized by the State of Idaho to provide cellphone and wireless services and equipment for Idaho governmental organizations. Counselor Daniel.
Before we go on this, on this, I was told I don't have to disclose this, but I'm still just gonna, gonna mention it. I do know the representative of Inland Cellular that got up earlier and spoke, I know him as an acquaintance, and I have talked to him a couple times in the past couple weeks, but it was all the same information that he mentioned when he addressed the council during public comments.
Okay. And I will, by disclosure, did meet with Chip last week after that work session, told him he can give me a call on my cellphone, so we did have a chat. It's not gonna influence my decision here.
And for disclosure purposes, I too received a phone call from Chip D'Amato. What was it, Ken? Kenneth?
Yeah, we're gonna get a message from him.
Kenneth, from Kenneth, earlier, too.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Same here with Mr. D'Amato.
Okay. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve. Read. Read. Resolution 2014-42.
So moved.
Okay, have a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
May I have a show of hands, please?
I'm a nay.
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 This is just for reading, I was.
This is just for the reading, not approval.
Approving Resolution 2014-42 by title only, a resolution approving the purchase of services of the state, off the state list, between the City of Lewiston and Idaho Municipal Corporation and Verizon Wireless, a corporation authorized to do business in the State of Idaho and a corporation authorized by the State of Idaho to provide cellphone and wireless services and equipment for Idaho government organizations, authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest respectively set agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Carrie. Resolution 2014-42 has been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second? Discussion. Counselor Daniel.
So, I did have a lot of stuff prepared to say, but this, this meeting, I've kinda lost most of it, so I will do my best. First off, I'd like to see the proposal that Inland had given staff, and they've wanted the council to see. I requested it, and I was told by staff that it wasn't appropriate to have, so I would like to see that before I even thought about voting against at this point.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
I have a question for IT staff. My background's actually IT and IT security. I'm not sure what page this is on. I got it online, but it was in our packet regarding Apple devices, 'cause we were told that Apple, going to the Apple iPads and iPhones is a secure reason for making this transition from Inland Cellular to Verizon. I take issue with this one statement here, where it says, "Apple device availability for standardization, security, and ease of use." Says, "Apple iOS doesn't need an antivirus program because it doesn't leave room for a virus, or Trojan, other malware, et cetera, to get into the system in the first place." And it goes on. Like I said, my background's IT security, and we used to make the statement that the only way to make any device completely secure is to unplug the network cable and put it up on the warehouse shelf. I've got three articles I've found here, and I, in the essence of time, I won't go on and on, but I'll just read the headlines. "Apple iOS App Store Gets First Virus: Learn About The App That Steals Your Contacts And Spams Your Friends," July 6, 2012. This one's from February 19, 2013. "Apple Computers Were Hacked By Same Hackers Who Targeted Facebook, Reuters, and Why Your iPhone Will Inevitably Catch A Virus." So I just wanted to point out that I think that that's misleading, and I disagree with the statement.
Okay. And I've got a couple concerns. I mean, when we, we had our work session and the presentation a few, few weeks back about the whats and whys and why we wanna do this, and that we didn't have to do an RFP because, or bid, is because Verizon's already pre-approved on the state list and things like that. It may or may not be, I have a problem with the process. You know, you can write a bid specification any way, shape you want. If you wanna get a specific piece of equipment, you can design it for that piece of equipment, and nobody's gonna be able to match the exact specifications. That's just a fact of life. We had a, Mr. Marsh might even remember this, there was a bid for a rubber tire loader out at the transfer station, and it came down to John Deere versus Caterpillar. And one of the specifications, and one of the reasons why the John Deere machine was disqualified, was the square inches of its rearview mirror. That was it. They're both comparable in horsepower, there was a fair difference in price, but the John Deere mirror wasn't quite big enough. And I thought, why don't you just take five bucks and go to NAPA and throw a new mirror on there, if you're getting a better deal on the equipment? So that's, that's one of these tricky deals here. You know, talking to people about, well, why can't we throw it out to a bid? And it would have to be a sealed bid. Maybe that's one reason why we shouldn't have had access to Mr. D'Amato's proposal. I mean, if they, if we go ahead and go through this process, I think that's the fair way to do things, and, and I do agree with you, you know, the Apple, you know, I've got an Apple phone, my wife's got some Samsung. Apple phone. My wife's got some Samsung Galaxy thing, about that big. I mean, I wouldn't even know where to start using it, but she hasn't had any problem with it. I mean, it's not an Apple device, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion to table this resolution so that we can discuss it further in a work session.
Second.
Okay.
One question that kind of goes with that is to, we were told that we needed to have it today because something would, potentially catastrophic would happen if we didn't have it today. So I was wondering why, like, we weren't told why, but we were told that we had to have this meeting today.
And that's a...
So I was just wondering if we could get an explanation as to why we were told we had to have this meeting today and what the ultimatum, ultimatum was.
I think, hang on a second here. Let's, before we consider your motion, I mean, I wouldn't, and I'm not in favor of table, and I'm, I'm actually in favor of not approving. Because if you start doing some of the math here...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, was there a second for the tabling?
I withdraw my second.
There was a motion to table.
I withdraw my second.
Oh, you're withdrawing the second?
Yeah.
Okay. So we did have a motion to table. Do we have a second? Okay. Motion to table fails for lack of a second. The bigger concern I've got is when we were discussing cost issues, and when it's brought to our attention that we're spending roughly forty-five, forty-eight hundred dollars a year on cellphone services, and, you know, it's really going to be a wash because we're going to get this, and we're going to get that, and blah, blah. If you do the math, and the numbers right here, six thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars a month, comes out to about seventy-eight thousand. It's about a thirty thousand dollar increase. Granted, there's different services that are attached with this. Dustin, you can shake your head, it's right here. So...
Is he allowed to comment?
Mr. Mayor, if you have questions or the staff on costs, I suggest that...
Somebody would like to come down from IT. I guess we do have some questions.
Dustin Spooner, Network Administrator, City of Lewiston.
Well, apparently then, the action proposed, staff recommends city council authorize the purchase, blah, blah, blah. Monthly estimated cost for all phone services is six thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-two cents.
I was shaking my head. We were, there was a question up there, where you received that information?
That's right here from the staff report. City Council Meeting Agenda Item History Commentary.
Is that our existing service?
This is the proposal that we're supposed to be voting on right now. Purchase of cellphone and wireless services and equipment from Verizon Wireless per Idaho State Contract PADD eleven oh five.
If I could get Joy to take a look at that.
Okay.
A little fresh on the technical side, but let's see if she can help us out here.
Joy Schwain, Purchasing Coordinator. That six thousand dollar figure that's in there is all citywide cell phones, including the upgrades that other departments are wanting. So yeah, it is an increase from what we're used to seeing for Inland Cellular, but it includes all the Sprint phones that we currently have, the Verizon ones, and the Inland Cellular. So there's a lot of increased ability in there, like I said, the upgrades.
Counselor Daniel.
Are there staff members that will be receiving a smartphone and a tablet?
Yes, there's many staff members that will receive a tablet and a smartphone.
I guess, make a statement in a, in a form of a question, but I could see, in some instances, the value of a person having a phone issued to them, a basic phone, and then possibly a tablet for when they're out in the field to work on. But I guess in my mind, if you're needing it to work, if the justification is for these data plans and everything, and smartphones and tablets, is so that, so that certain staff members can be working in the field, why would, why would we have somebody who normally has a PC in their office, a landline, why would we give them a smartphone and a tablet?
Majority of the users that we're trying to move out into the field currently have a, a laptop and a smartphone. And we're just trying to increase productivity with the smartphone, the iOS, and the tablet of an Apple. You can sync data in between the two, and, you know, just, we're looking for efficiency in that area with Apple products.
Counselor Blakely.
Question. The pages aren't numbered here, so I numbered them for you. So counting this as page number one, rough page of the City Council Meeting Agenda. Let's move into what would be page number six. And the title of that page is Take Advantage Of The Power To Do More. Note the self, number of pages. All righty. I'm confused, so help me here. This is the, this is part of the, it looks like it's part of the bid. And, and I'm looking here, I'm looking at the document I have online too. And it looks like the monthly recurring voice data plans and additional services is five thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. We in agreement with that?
Are you on page six, or what?
It doesn't have numbers, so let's count this as page one.
I found your page six, take advantage.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven?
Yes, but they did not include anything for taxes.
Excuse me now?
They didn't include any fees for taxes or other fees, and so we tacked on about eleven percent for that.
Okay, so that's how we get to the number that the mayor is referring to.
Six thousand.
All righty. Then help me here. So there are some one char, one-time charges of one thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine that looks like it's a credit.
Correct.
Correct? And that's a credit for taking in a bunch of old phones? Okay. Kind of an agreement there?
Yes.
Shake your heads in jointly or don't. Help me here, but work together. Okay? So then, we're going to get a credit, a one-time credit of ten thousand three hundred and thirty-seven. And that's, is that because Lewiston is the greatest place in Idaho to live? What, help me, why, why are we getting a credit? No, no, Ken, hold on.
Take a testimony.
I don't know why he split the credits in two ways like that, but there's credits for phones being turned in.
Do we have a representative from Verizon, or do we have someone else in the city who can help with this?
Eric Scott, IS Manager, if I may, Counsel.
Please, please.
Apparently the credit is a one hundred dollar credit for every iPhone that we get. I was just explaining that by Judy, so.
So then, okay, so that's one time. So it looks like our first-year cost is like, I don't know. That's what I can't tell. It's, there is no first-year cost? Or, or we're four thousand?
They gave this as a monthly fee. So if you multiply it by twelve, you're going to find your annual.
Good point. Thank you for correcting me on that. All righty. So then, going forward, our monthly fee is going to be what's on the document that we're approving, or may approve or disapprove. Six thousand and, what did we say? Six thousand what? Six thousand four seventy-four.
Correct. It'll be about there, because we estimate it on the taxes and fees.
All right. Between the three of you, what, just to be, help to defend the other side of the argument, what might be some other expenses that we would start seeing that we don't anticipate?
I would have to say that these, those fees are included. There will be some upgrades to services for different departments that currently aren't choosing those services because they're a current provider. So we would see increases though, there. I believe those were included in here.
Okay. My, my last question, Mr. Mayor, is, I understand that we, I don't want to violate any RFP rules or anything like that, but what are we current, maybe I'm in the dark and I don't know the answer to this, and maybe I should, what are we paying right now?
About forty-eight hundred.
About forty, is it, is the number about forty-eight hundred?
That includes all cellphone services though. That's Sprint, and Inland, and Verizon altogether. Inland itself runs around thirty-eight hundred. But that varies if someone buys a phone, it'll go whatever.
So we're going to go from forty-eight to...
Fifty thousand to seventy-five thousand.
We're, so we're going to go up a couple grand a month, something like that, right?
Because of the increased upgrades.
And the additional services that we're looking at with the expanded opportunity.
And I'm not arguing that, I'm not arguing that those services don't warrant it. I love my iPad. So.
I'm just, adding on, once you offer the service, there are many departments that chose to upgrade at that time, once it was offered.
Counselor Daniel.
Speaking of Counselor Blakely's iPad, is it, is that part of the plan as well, as far as data, or is that still separate?
The data plan is.
Okay. Now, is this plan taking into account that other counselors may be getting a tablet as well, or would that just be automatically added? Or is that built into this already?
I think the council tablets were coming out of...
No, it includes for two counselors.
Separate account.
Well, the data plan, though, I was, I was just asking, I think there's twenty-five tablets, I'm assuming twenty-five data plans for the tablets. Is that, is that accounting for the counselors up here that haven't requested a tablet yet, or is that minus? I guess I'm curious if these dollars are taken into account.
It's just the, the two.
Okay.
And I would, I guess I would offer, you know, we're talking about extra costs that we might experience. If, I'm just doing some quick math, so, and it's going to be generic, but at the three, thirty-five thousand eight hundred shared minutes, that's for our whole plan. If I do a little bit of math, it kind of, it roughly works out to about sixty minutes a week per phone.
They're not all, all plans are not shared. There's only portions of the plans that are shared minutes. Some of the other, some of the plans have their own individual minutes.
Counselor...
Actually, Counselor...
Pro Tem.
It shows here that there's a hundred and fifty-eight total phone lines. Are all of those for single users, or how many users do we have total?
That's a good question. I would have to look on the total number of users, but I know that many of the users currently use their own phone within the city, and moving forward, looking to add to, to put them on the city plan.
I, I think my understanding, based on some information I asked staff earlier, I think it's a, Judy can correct me, I think a hundred and thirty-four handsets, and twenty-five tablets, and two, two Wi-Fi items for the police department? Okay. I was close.
Counselor Blakely.
I just wonder if Judy should be up here, too. Well, I keep looking, I'm watching hand signals, and looking up there for support, and maybe Judy, you should be up helping up with this. I am frankly a little bit disappointed right now. I'm, I gotta be honest, I'm not all this impressed with the presentation that I'm seeing at this point in time. It's scattered and chunky and, and clunky. And I, I would have expected a little bit cleaner presentation, maybe even a PowerPoint, maybe something in front of me. I just don't know who's really the, the go-to person in, in the four of you. All of you, I suspect, are knowledgeable, very knowledgeable. Don't get me wrong. I just don't, not quite sure who the go-to person is. And if it's you, Judy, and maybe we should be talking through you and following back here, if you were the, if you were the liaison on this committee. I'm not sure. But, so my, before I get down to the question, I want to confirm. Did a letter go out to city employees informing them that there's going to be a change to Verizon in near time, or has something gone out to employees already saying that? We heard that from Mr. D'Amato, and I can't confirm it. I don't know.
Do you want me, okay. There has not been a letter that went out. What happened is every email that has went out has always had in capital letters, "If." If council should approve, because the, the date of June ninth was important because of the extra discounts, et cetera, that we will have through, I think it's through June twenty-third. And...
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, thank you. And so what went out was, "If council should approve, then we would like you to tape your name on the back of your phone," and just, we got some things ready to go, only if it were approved, because of the deadlines for the discounts. Never ever has there been any indication, ever from the start, that any decision has been made. And one thing I just wanted to touch on, which we've touched on a couple of times, is cost is very important, but what started this whole research into our phones was brought on by employees who are very upset by the service that they're receiving. It wasn't something that, that Dan just decided now's the time to check on our cellphones. And so what I did when that was brought up was, I wanted a little background on it, and so I immediately sent out an email to all city employees, asking them for their feedback, positive, negative, neutral, on not just city phones, but also on personal phones. Based on that information, oh, you're not asking me all of this, but anyway, so we just, based on that information of the poor network service they were receiving, et cetera, and other problems, that's when we met with Inland Cellular to discuss these things. They were aware of the problems, and so we just moved on from there with more research.
Counselor Daniel.
Okay, first, I think all four of you are doing fine. We're asking very different questions. We're asking purchasing questions, IT questions, general, I guess, sales pitch questions, so I think you guys are doing fine. However, I do have a question about cancellation fees, any type of strings attached. In here, I think it mentioned, we could cancel at any point, but are there any strings whatsoever attached to this contract as far as the phones, the plan, anything?
No, and I verified that after one of our meetings, that we can cancel at any time. The only thing that would happen, just as will happen right now, is that you can keep your phone numbers, but you cannot keep your same phone. The phones that we're going to receive right now are, oh, anyway, so that will not be an issue. Any phones that we're switching to right now will not be an issue as far as cost, if a decision is made tonight. But no, we could drop in a week. There are no early termination fees.
Counselor Blakely.
And I see that in the contract, that it clearly states that there's no termination fees. As far as the people who are going to get new phones, they're going to get a new phone, same number. They'll be able to go up to the Verizon store, and, you're shaking your head now, why? Let me finish my question. They'll be able, once they acquire their new phones, they'll be able to go to the Verizon store to transfer all their information, phone numbers and all that. Would that be done in-house?
In-house.
In-house.
So what would happen, and that's kind of part of the deadline thing, and part of the "if" council approves, is that the following week, this following week, they would bring in a team that would take the old phones, switch everything immediately to the new phones, answer any questions, and they would go from there. And then we would have a portal manager, I think we talked about that before, with Dustin, or with IT, in that if someone wants a phone, he can get one, you know, like first thing in the, in the very next day, which is also now currently available. And, but he is able to activate, deactivate phones just right from city hall.
Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the, going out and doing the survey. At the same time, though, I, I kind of feel like, you know, we shouldn't rush into this deal with Verizon. I feel like if there was a widespread problem, if this was ongoing, then the tickets should be documented and SIS aid, or we should be able to pull up a record and see over time. You know, I know that if, I received a survey, and it asked if I wanted a brand-new iPhone, I'd, I'd say, yeah, I've got... I'd, I'd say, yeah, I've got lots of problems with my phone, I want a free iPhone. But to rush into this without a lot of evidence, and I, I did put the request in to get more information from IT, and, you know, the one email I saw was from January, it looked like there was an outage with some towers, and there wasn't a lot of back and forth. It didn't look to me like this was a widespread, ongoing issue with Inland Cellular, and so I'd like to see some more evidence that Inland Cellular is not doing what they're requested to do, you know, through the, the comments from the survey, so, yeah.
Counselor Blakey.
The one argument I heard back in the last work session, there might've been one back before this, it's somewhere in the manse you can see, was both of the acting police chief and, or act, acting fire chief and the current police chief, acting fire chief, current police chief, both made comments where they were supportive of this change. And so, you know, that, that carries some weight, that carries some weight in helping me, helps me have not made a decision, but helps me knowing that there is some, some departments, and I do hear Dustin telling me that this is a change that you can support. I am concerned, can you take on their job title? I mean, do you want more work? Go for it. But do you?
I, I think what we were looking at when IT was brought into this discovery, what is, can we support it, and what would we need to support it? And what we need to support it is a management tool, and so in the industry, there is a free iPhone management tool that our, that our entire team could use. And so that's why, one of the pushes that we went and looked at iPhone is, we could lock it down and prevent a lot of the problems before the user has a chance to cause a problem.
And if I could interject, along with that thought is standardization. Currently, we've got all sorts of different types of phones. That becomes a challenge for IT to secure the iOS, can be locked down pretty easily, it's a standard. I mean, could we find a standard with a Galaxy? Probably could. Dustin's got a very good background, real strong background with, with the iOS, and personally, this has nothing to do with, I like the iPhone better. I actually like my Galaxy S4 better than the last iPhone I had, my experience, and I'll just start here if I may, I'm the new guy here. I've only been here for two, for a year, working for the city. I've been up here in...
So am I, I'm a new guy.
Great, makes two of us. So, I'm new to the valley. I moved up here two years ago. I have spent thousands of dollars over the last several years, sent that money to Verizon, that's who we had when we were in Arizona. Continued to do that up here because Verizon works where I live, out there at my little farm. When I came to the city and was handed an Inland Cellular phone, I thought, well, that's kinda cool. I'd never heard of Inland Cellular. It's a new guy, a small company. I've had small businesses. I understand supporting local and the smaller business. I liked it. Problem I had was when I was traveling in Portland for a surgery that my daughter had to have and trying to work, my emails were not going through. I tried to cancel a meeting, the cancellation never went through. People are calling me, are you gonna join the meeting? That was embarrassing. The cancellation showed up like a month later. People are calling, what's this cancellation for? Did we have a meeting? Oh, that was a cancellation that you were supposed to have a month ago. So, you know, I brought that to the table, back, back here with the team, and then that's when they started bringing all the complaints to the table. I've had lots of people come and complain. We didn't allow this stuff in CISAID because we don't support it. We tell them to go to Inland Cellular. Go to, go to Sprint, go to Verizon, whoever your carrier is currently. IT currently is not supporting these devices. So, that's just from me, the new guy.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, let me just clarify something. This is not an issue of do you go to Inland Cellular or do you go to Verizon. Verizon is on the state list. They have been pre-approved to provide services because they competitively bid for that with the state, and that's how they get on the state list. The state has to competitively bid for those in order to qualify on the state list. If you choose not to approve the Verizon plan, then you will be required, because of the amount of money we're spending, to go out to sealed bids. And we'll either do pre-qualifications, write specifications, and that sort of thing, but that's, those are the decisions you have. It's not of, we're going to Verizon or we're going to Inland Cellular. The amount of money that we're spending is over fifty thousand dollars, and we're required to do sealed bids.
Counselor Daniel.
I'm done with questions unless you guys have any more.
I'm done with questions.
I'll, I'll yield if anybody... Okay. So, I'm not saying that we necessarily stay with Inland, I'm saying I think we need to slow down, let's make this process a little bit more fair. I would, I would still like to look at their, their plan that they have offered, I mean, up as a public record. I mean, they, unless it's illegal for me to look at it, then I, I'd like to see it. And I'd also like to have a more general discussion on, on cellphones. I mean, maybe we continue doing what we're doing, maybe we do end up going with Verizon, or maybe we end up giving a stipend like the county does.
Exactly.
I, I would like to actually have a more generalized discussion before we lock ourselves into a long-term plan.
I agree a hundred percent. Counselor Blakey.
So do I. I, I don't understand the Verizon deadline. If they want our business bad enough, I suspect they would push that deadline further. I, I don't, I can't believe, maybe they're gonna raise the price on us, and if that's the case, then that's a better argument to use them, but let's look at this issue a little bit longer.
Okay. So, let's see, where are we at? There's no further discussion?
There's a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. So, that being said, I guess, is there anything else? Had entered, or, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2014 dash forty-two, say aye? Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, so I guess we're going back to the drawing board here. Thank you. And thanks, staff. Okay, next up, Resolution 2014 dash forty-one, this is approving a development agreement and agreement to annexation between the city and Leita Sanitation Incorporated, doing business as Clearwater Composting. I'll entertain a motion to appro, or to read Resolution 2014 dash forty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motions been made and seconded, any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Approving Resolution 2014 dash forty-one by title only. A resolution approving a development agreement and an agreement to annexation between the city of Lewiston and Idaho Municipal Corporation and Leita Sanitation Incorporated and Idaho Corporation, DBA Clearwater Composting, authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest respectively said agreement and providing an effective date.
Counselors, Resolution 2014 dash forty-one has been read. I'll accept a motion to approve Resolution 2014 dash forty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, Resolution 2014 dash thirty-one, this is accepting an easement from the city to Northwest Pipeline LLC for access to city property, approving a temporary work and access agreement between the city and Northwest Pipeline for the construction of a cathodic protection facility. I'll entertain a motion to read.
Motion to read.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Approving Resolution 2014 dash thirty-one by title only. A resolution accepting an easement from the city of Lewiston and Idaho Municipal Corporation to Northwest Pipeline LLC for access to city property, accepting and approving a temporary work and access agreement between the city of Lewiston and Northwest Pipeline LLC for the construction of a cathodic protection facility and providing an effective date.
Hey, counselors, motion for, Resolution 2014 dash thirty-one has been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2014 dash thirty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, vouchers payable to Albertson's, four twenty-five fourteen through five eight fourteen and five nine fourteen through five twenty-two fourteen, the amount of ninety-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. I'll entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable to Albertson's.
So moved.
Counselor Daniel abstaining.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six, zero to one. Next item, item F, which is vouchers payable to Pathologist Regional Laboratory in the amount of thirty-five dollars and eighty cents. Thank you, Pro Tem. I'll entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable to pathology, Pathologist Regional Lab with Pro Tem Johnson abstaining.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six, zero, and one abstention. Okay, well, on to unfinished and new business. City Council comments. Do you have any city council comments this evening? You still have one left in you?
Still got one left. I may just wanna reiterate, as we said in the work session today, so it'd be on, if we're still televised and anybody's still awake out there watching this, that we had a very good meeting, the three members that were volunteered to be on the human rights resolution, and working on that resolution, myself, Counselor Randall, Counselor Malado. We made good progress on that, and I just wanna say that we're working forward, and hopefully we'll have a document ready within the next couple meetings to present.
Okay. Counselor Collins.
Mr. Mayor, I know we've got committee appointments and things coming up in, in just a bit, hopefully I'm not getting too far ahead of myself here, but as a representative from the Historic Preservation Commission, we have the annual orchid awards coming up, and we're seeking nominations, and rather than fumble my words, I'm just gonna, I'd like to read the nomination criteria here. The Lewiston Historic Preservation Commission requests your nominations for the Orchids Awards to celebrate those individuals and organizations that have made a positive contribution to historic preservation. Outstanding examples of preservation projects can be awarded in the following categories: Excellence in Historic Preservation, Contribution to Historic Preservation, Preservation Centative, New Construction, Friend of Preservation, Distinguished Preservationist, Cultural Heritage Preservation, and Heritage Stewardship. And I believe we're accepting those nominations through, through July. And on the same token, we have a number of Historic Preservation Committee members that are, their terms are expiring in September, that we'll be looking for applications for those positions at some point.
Okay, thank you. Any other council comments? I just have a brief one. I kinda spaced it up, but I actually was a little bit late, went down to the first anniversary celebration for the city library, and even at the time I got there, which is just before three o'clock, it started at one, there were still quite a few folks, inside and outside. Alexa did a really nice job, made me get my picture taken with a stormtrooper from Star Wars. Thought people got over that stage, but it was, it was entertaining. Everybody had a, everybody had a good time, so. One other comment I've got, I appreciate the work staff did putting together this proposal. I just, I think that it needs a little more vetting, you know, and it's, I don't want it to be taken or meant as an insult to anybody that we're disagreeing with, but I think we kinda disagreed with the process that was presented to us, so, before anybody gets crazy and starts throwing up bid documents and stuff like that, I think this is a process we need to maybe vet again at a work session fairly soon, and hash out some of the differences we had with, A, the process, B, maybe the equipment, C, what we really wanna do, do we wanna be in the cellphone business? I, you know, I don't know. So, I'll just leave it at that. Anybody else? City manager comments? Mr. Bennett?
I'm just gonna repeat what I said today at the work session, and we do have a meeting next Monday coming up with Nespurce County at the Braemer Building, and it'll be at three o'clock, and that will be for us to discuss shared programs between the city and the county that affect both budgets for both agencies, and to help us to get a little better idea of what the impacts are going to be on our individual budgets.
Okay. Advisory Board and Commission appointments? Do we have any this evening?
Still have two openings.
Still have two openings?
For solid waste.
For the Solid Waste Advisory Commission? If anybody's interested, please contact Kerry.
Now's a good time, now's a good time to apply because our next meeting won't be until September, so.
There you go. Summer vacation. Okay, work session agenda topics, I just alluded to one.
Yeah, I was gonna...
And anything else?
I have a question.
Certainly.
That have to do with work session agenda, but a while ago, we had talked about repealing the parade candy ordinance?
Yes, it's coming.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, it's been, we're just, I'm not sure which agenda the first reading is on, it may be at the next meeting.
Okay. And we may wanna, we may wanna slide in the noise ordinance at some point in time for review.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Okay, well, if that's it, I guess we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.